Yeah, there's sufficiency.
I agree.
I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting, to order for Tuesday, August 27th, 2019. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
All right, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business this evening. Number two would be a reminder to please speak into the microphone from BATV so that everybody can hear it. Okay, next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have any? Nothing. Okay. Next item would be matters for the public, or things not on the agenda tonight. Nobody here for that. All right, before we go to the discussions, I'd like to read a quick letter for everybody. "I know there are many people here tonight who wish to speak about items on the agenda. Some of you may never been to a council meeting before, so it might help for me to explain a little bit about the process. A matter on the agenda tonight is only a discussion, the purpose of which is to provide staff with direction on what action the council would like it to consider voting on at a future meeting. First you'll hear from the city administrator as a brief presentation about background information. Following that presentation, the council may have some questions for her, the city attorney, or other staff members. Following that, the council will provide members of the public with opportunity to comment. If you would like to speak, please put your name on the list by the door, and if you're called up to the podium, please first state your name for the secretary. Note that we may hear from as many of you as possible, please keep your comments as brief as possible and try to keep them under three minutes. We will be timing them tonight if we do have a lot of people signed up. Please do not feel like you must repeat comments that someone else has already made. If you agree with a former speaker, please just simply state that. If you pose a question during your comment, it may or may not be answered this evening, and staff will -- but staff will prepare a Q&amp;A document for the meeting with answers to your questions if they require research. Audience members, please do not clap or boo or otherwise disrupt the process. Let's all provide each other with dignity and respect as we consider very important matters before us this evening. After the public comments, the city council will discuss the matter and provide direction to staff about preparing the next step based upon our discussions. Again, no final action is being taken tonight. There will be at least one more committee of the whole meeting and another city council meeting before any additional decision can be made." Thank you. So, next up on the agenda is the discussion on the engineering on Prairie Street reconstruction. Your honor? You brought that up?
Well, it certainly is probably a well-known fact amongst the council that I'm the one that asked to bring this up, if for nothing else, just to have some conversation about it so that everybody can understand my views and why some of the thoughts I have on this particular issue. As all of you know, I do serve as the chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings, Council of Mayors in Chicago, which represents all the cities in the seven-county area surrounding the city of Chicago, and we are the organization that programs, receives programs, administers, and monitors, and audits all the federal transportation dollars that come into the Chicagoland region. As resulted at the pots of money that come in are divided by a formula that everybody's agreed to based on regional councils of government, and in our case, we are in the Kane-Kendall Council of Government, and the Kane-Kendall Council of Government probably in -- the number changes with some frequency depending on how many miles qualify as federally approved highways, population numbers factored into that, there's a number of things that get involved in this. Anyway, Kane-Kendall gets somewhere around $8 million a year that is then programmed by the local council for use and projects in the Kane-Kendall area. It's been a few years since Batavia got any of that money because it has to be equally shared with everybody else in the council. So, as things worked out, we have a council of mayors project right now under construction in Batavia, and that's the intersection of Deer Path Road and Main Street. And people think that's a Batavia project, but that is not a Batavia project, that is a Kane County Department of Transportation project, and Batavia is just a minor contributor to it with the Deer Path Roads end of it, the Main Street route of it is all under Kane County jurisdiction. So, that's a Kane County project. So, we have two projects now that have risen to the front of the pack as far as being funded. One is the Main Street Project, which will be started next year, that'll go from Water Street out to Van Nortrick Avenue, and it's kind of a similar thing to what we're talking about on Prairie Street, it'll be a rebuilding of the street, there'll be some minor widening, there'll be -- we've got some major utility work we have to do out there that's not covered by the federal grant on that thing, but they -- we have to unseparate some water lines and other stuff that's out there. So, that project will be going on next year. We also have the Prairie Street Project, which is a two-phased project, and this is the first phase of it, and this goes from just south of the railroad tracks at Wilson Street down to Pine Street. In round numbers, the Main Street Project, given its length and the issues that are involved there, I believe we're getting $2.5 million on that project, and if my memory serves me right, the Prairie Street Project is about $1,008,000 or thereabouts. So, those are the numbers, we're going to be the beneficiaries of $4.3 million of federal money. And I just want to say, as the mayor, certainly I don't want to do anything that discredits our ability to obtain that money because, needless to say, our taxpayers can certainly welcome their receipt of that money so we don't have to take some property tax money or some other city fund to start to do some of this roadwork. So, I think it is imperative that we work out some understanding that we keep that -- keep going. Beyond that, I have just learned that the second phase of the project may also be coming up for funding in the next several years, and that would be the rebuilding of the intersection at Wilson and Prairie, which would include a traffic signal at that intersection plus railroad crossing gates on at least two legs of that intersection. So, I think that would be a welcome improvement to a lot of people, too, and I don't want to do anything to dissuade that because that's more federal money coming into Batavia. Where I'm going with this tonight is, is that I -- obviously, everybody here knows where I live, down on the southeast side off of Hart Road, so I travel that Prairie Street probably a minimum of five times a day, many times it's 10 to 15 times a day I'm down there running up and down that street. And the one thing I've begun to notice with some great interest is the number of bicycle riders, and, you know, we have all these bicycle trails that I guess if you go back into the early 1980s when Phil Elstrom, who was county board chairman, came up with the idea of putting bicycle trails in Kane County, I was accused publicly of being his co-conspirator in that because I supported Batavia agreeing to allow all these trails to be put on both sides of the river, unlike some of our neighboring communities. And so, the trails got built, and we just built upon the bicycle network that we have, and I'm very proud of all the activity that we have on bicycles. We have a lot of visitors every year come into the community and ride the trails and cross the bridge here outside the building, and we do a lot with bicycles. So, I can remember when those were first being proposed, we had some public meetings, and specifically, people up on North Batavia Avenue were just adamant against the bicycle trails because they thought it was going to be an intrusion in their backyard. I had one woman accuse me of inviting burglars, drug dealers, and unscrupulous people into her backyard by being on that bike trail, and she was going to hold me responsible. And that never happened, and I'm aware of, but those were -- and so, it's always time you get into this stuff, you wear political battle scars because you try to do the right thing. And I will tell you that in my career here, I've got some political battle scars because some things were very highly objectable. One was the bicycle trails, another was the river rain apartments up here, another was building the library and the new library in downtown Batavia, and another classic was rezoning Randall Road for commercial business. And I would suggest that every one of those things had its major benefit to Batavia, but there, let me tell you, there were people on each one of those subjects that strongly opposed it and made a lot of noise against it. So, going back to Prairie Street, I just want to share that as I'm riding up and down there, I see all these bicycle riders, and the thing that amazes me is the lack of any consideration by most of them to want to stop for anything, especially two stop signs at Prairie and Pine and Prairie and Laurel. And the one at Laurel specifically bothers me a lot because you got a school down there, so you have all these adults mostly charging through that intersection in front of all these kids walking to school, and they totally disregard the stop signs. And so, we've made a video, the Batavia Police Department went down and made a video of -- and I could have made this video very long, but I suggested to the chief that we keep it very limited just to give you an idea of what we are facing. So, you want to play that for us very quickly? It'll only take a minute.
Marty?
Yeah, I just want to -- Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that you want to show a video of people running the stop signs, but I am uncomfortable with viewing a video of people that we were not cited for anything. I don't know if it shows their face, and I am uncomfortable with government video for public scrutiny of individuals allegedly committing crimes.
Well, in anticipation of that concern being raised, Alderman Callahan, we specifically had the police sit back on Laurel Street, did this at the intersection of Laurel and Prairie, at a distance that I don't think anybody's face is going to be easily recognized.
Right, and that's where I'm concerned of a slippery slope of people going out and videoing cars going through intersections and airing it for public scrutiny. That's my concern.
Dan?
I'll echo Marty's remarks. The video definitely does make me uncomfortable. The other thing that makes me uncomfortable is this is an issue that the council actually decided when there was still snow on the ground. So, it's been many, many months that we've reviewed this, and it just seems to me that if -- if this is something you'd like to present, it seems like the thing that should be presented during the mayor's remarks, not necessarily during a council meeting. And then, I guess, at some point, the council should probably talk about spending public resources. It takes two council members to direct staff to do something. I'm not necessarily questioning what your authority is here, but I'm just curious, have you ever done other surveillance projects before and just not shown them to us?
Probably the answer to that is no.
Okay.
So, we have a car traffic problem.
Yeah.
Well, as I said, we could have had probably an hour's worth of tape here if we'd wanted to, I don't need to berate this thing, it is what it is. Based on what I've seen, I have the -- I know the people at IDOT very well, I'm in Chicago with them all the time, I've raised the issue with them about this particular program and this design. I'm told that if we wanted to do a memorandum of understanding with them, they could -- with some minor adjustment on engineering as far as the agreement, they could change this from a dedicated lanes. Now, what we're talking about with the new street is having two dedicated bike lanes, which I feel is just going to be an encouragement for these bicycle riders. Now, you're giving them their own place on the road, and they're not going to stop for nothing then, really, because now they've got a dedicated lane there. I hope I'm wrong, but I doubt it. So, the other option would be to make this a shared route, where you would have the bicycles and the cars and everybody, like we do right outside here, share the route, and that would be what I would encourage the councils to do and get rid of the bike lanes altogether. Another issue that's been raised certainly with me by some of the residents in Prairie Street, many of whom are older and like myself, that while we're taking away all the parking in front of their houses, and specifically, you're doing -- you want to do it 12 months out of the year, and how many people, if it's snowing on the ground and everything else, are going to be riding bicycles down there in November, December, January during the Christmas, New Year's Eve, Thanksgiving season? And so, I guess if we're going to go ahead with this, I would think that I'm going to be suggesting to the city council that we consider some relaxation on enforcement of parking down there, if in fact, we're going to tell everybody you can't park in front of your house in front of Christmas, but there probably isn't going to be any bicycles out there that day anyway. Now, that being said, the one thing that I think has to be done here, if in fact, we go forward with this, and is that each one of these stop signs should be decorated, I will call that, with another sign either a few feet ahead of it or right below it saying that all bicycles must stop for the sign. And that will certainly put a whole bunch of people riding those bicycles on notice that, hey, there's a stop sign here and you're expected to stop. Now, that being the case, I guess I'd be of the belief from what I see in some of the attitudes, that probably a lot of people still won't stop for that. So, I've talked to the police chief, and I guess the idea we would have would be to maybe start creating some enforcement patrols, where we'll just sit at certain places on South Prairie Street, and every time we see one of these, we'll go out and write the person a $120 ticket for running the stop sign at the intersection. That's another option we have open to us. So, it's up to the council. I'm, as you know, this is a strong city council, weak mayor government, I do not vote, I don't have a say, other than I can probably interject things into the agenda or the committee's agenda like I've just done with this. And I would tell you that I'm strongly of the belief it's within my power to do that, and I would just encourage your strong consideration of what I've just shown you, you maybe just want to pass on to the next item and not act on this at all, but I would suggest you, you know, there's a public record of this now, of this issue being raised, and I would suggest that we probably need to take further conversation about it. So, thank you.
Somebody want to start off?
Yeah, I will, and I appreciate the video, but honestly, what I saw there, you know, I do ride a little bit, I didn't see -- I mean, I did see one herd go through, that pretty good clip. Most of those people slowed down a bit, they did. Matter of fact, most of the cars didn't stop at all.
That's the next issue.
So, so, I didn't -- I understand what you're saying, I don't think by you're going to dissuade cyclists for coming down that route. I don't think, you know, by doing whatever we're doing. I would, you know, my gut feel is that, you know, we really want to encourage, if we're encouraging the pedestrianism down here and walkability and rideability, this is a main artery into town, you know, from the southeast side. So, I agree about enforcement. I have come down Pine Street and, you know, and have been the victim of the herd that has come down and not stopped, but honestly, within that framework of what I saw, I saw most of those cyclists not going that fast, and a fair amount of them kind of slowing down and doing what's that called, the Idaho Stop, the whatever that is. So, and so, that's, I think that, I'm not sure if that video helped so much from that standpoint. I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I just, I wouldn't, I want to encourage cycling through town, even, but I think the enforcement side of it, you know, needs to be stepped up. Again, I ride out at Fermi, it is well-known out there, if you're a cyclist, if you do not put a foot down at a stop sign, you're going to get a ticket if they're out there, period. So, you know, that's one of the things that we can do in town, we can enforce, and we can slow that down.
Marty?
Yeah, I think we have, we have a commission, the biking commission, which has a lot of experts on, that are appointed by the mayor, to provide us with insights and information with their expertise. Based on what we know, if we start having everyone follow the law, which is what we want to do, the unintended consequences could be that all of them line up, stop, and fully use the lane that they are legally entitled to. At that point, cars will now sit behind 30 bike drivers with the traffic conditions the way they are in the downtown, that could add significant travel times and cause, I think, what we've seen a lot of anecdotal road rage that's out there aimed towards bicyclists. So, if another alderman would join me, I would request that the bike commission study the issue as to what is the best solution for moving bicycle traffic through our community in a safe manner, and provide those recommendations to us so that we're able to act upon them.
Stand with you on that.
Yeah, I guess what I would say as a response to that is I think that they've already done that. I mean, the bicycle commission came up with a recommendation for the city council to put these lanes in and to connect the parts of town that are not connected with bicycle lanes, and this is another piece of that puzzle. And I feel like we're a certain percentage of the way through that, and to go backwards and take out that next piece of the puzzle and leave it all disconnected still doesn't help anything. We know we have federal funds to help do this road and do it the way that makes sense for the bicycle plan that we adopted as a council many years ago. I think that that's something that we have to do now. I think that there is a big education thing that the bicycle commission could help us with because I think that they're, in some ways, connected to a lot of these bicycle groups or have connections to them, where I think that could help, and I think that education is a big thing. We're not going to go out and, you know, shut down Randall Road because people speed on it. And I think, in some ways, that's what I feel like the mayor is asking us to do with Prairie Street, is to take away the bike lanes and put the people on bikes that we know are going to use the road regardless back into the traffic and having to go around parked cars. I mean, to me, there's nothing worse than riding a bike and having to go around in and out of parked cars in traffic at the same time. That's a disaster waiting to happen if they have their own lane on each side of the road. To me, that's a safer option, and I think that's what the bike commission tried to explain to us when they pushed for those. We have that on Western Avenue, we have it on Millview, granted, there's some parking in certain spots on Millview, but it, in my mind, has worked out very well, and I think that's something that we have to continue. So, that's why I've always been for it. If you want to have the bike commission study it further, come up with other recommendations, I'm fine with that, but I think they've done a lot of work already for us to get us to this point.
No, to be clear, what I would say is I'm not in favor of changing the as we have voted on back in winter. I am suggesting that the mayor is raising a point about I am suggesting that the mayor is raising a point about safety issues that currently exist without a street design. I don't believe that's probably the only intersection where there are concerns with either cars or bikes going through stop signs. What I would like to do is have the bike commission present to us options as a whole for how traffic and bicycles can move safely through the community and what suggestions may be out there for us to consider in addition to this project.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess to kind of continue on that, I see the video and I'm more concerned about the cars going through these stop signs. They're going to hurt somebody. The bikes, yes, you're going to get injured if you get hit by a bike and you're going to get injured if you get hit by a swarm of bikes coming. But I'm more concerned about the cars. And this is one stop sign in Batavia. So if we're going to enforce and put up a special stop sign, which there's no need for a special stop sign because theoretically, the bikes are supposed to follow the same laws. There doesn't have to be another stop sign that says bikes must stop because that's already the law. But then we're going to have to be out at every single stop sign giving tickets every time somebody rolls through on their motorcycle or their bicycle or their car at every one of these stop signs. It's not practical. I understand there's some concern with the residents and losing the parking. I totally understand that. But what Marty had said last time was that it is a public street. It's, the streets are to be used for everybody, not just for the residents on that street. And we need to abide by that. And that's what we're trying to do. If we go and ticket every bike rider that comes down here, then you can forget about us being the crossroads of the Fox with all these bike, all this bike traffic stopping and using our businesses, because they're just going to find, yeah, North Roar is a crossroad, I guess. But, you know, people will stop because they're going to say, "I'm not going to go to Batavia because I've gone there twice and gotten a ticket." And is that what we want? I mean, I don't think so. It's unfortunate that it is affecting this street and it is affecting these residents. But it's going to happen again sometime in the next five, 10, 15 years, where we're going to put bike lanes in somewhere else and we're going to run in the same conversation. We need to stick to our guns and say, "We're trying to make the streets more usable for everybody." And the bike lanes are meant not for, necessarily for the throngs of people coming down. It's meant for the 12 to 18-year-old kid that is not necessarily as comfortable on his bike as somebody who's been riding for 40 years.
Well, I just want to respond here that I guess I would hope that what you're saying is that if we build this the way it's designed, that we're going to have these dedicated lanes in both the east and the west sides of the street, and then all the bicyclists coming down there hopefully are going to stop for the stop sign. I guess I'm of the opposite opinion. I think that it's going to be an encouragement factor, that many of them are going to get on the bicycle and think, "Well, I've got my own lane here now so I can just zip right through here."
I think they'll do the same thing they're doing right now. I don't think it'll change. It just gives them a safe spot to not have to weave in and out.
I mean, we've stayed away from police ticketing this, but I guess that's probably something that we're going to have to get ourselves into. The ticket's $120 for everyone we give you. So that's where I think we'll probably start to look as we get into what we're going to talk about here, so.
Tony?
Yep. I understand your concern with this, Mr. Mayor, but I believe that having that separate lane separating the cars can make enforcement easier and make enforcement, so for instance, there could be a separate line for stopping in the bike lane with a painted stop sign that would signal directly to the bicyclists, "Hey, you, by law, you have to stop here", and not let them think that, you know, they don't have to follow the rules of the, for the cars. So I think it would do, it would make it safer for everyone to have a separate bike lane.
Nick?
What I saw in the video, while there was laws being broken by everybody, it seemed that both bikes and cars were going at a decent pace and coexisted nicely. I would still be an advocate for parking on that street for the residents. My concern goes to not just, I think it'll be the same as it is today with the dedicated lanes, but without any parked cars, it opens up that street for the cars to drive faster, like you were saying the studies show with narrower streets or narrower obstacles, cars naturally slow down. So I think we're opening it up and it'll be a perceived faster opportunity for cars to go to. So, I'm still an advocate for the residents' parking. While I still love the bikes and bike, it seemed like they're coexisting fine now, so I don't know why we would change it.
Because we're not widening the road. I mean, that's, that-
No, without cars parking in it, it naturally is-
Right. But there's typically not a ton of cars parked on that road anyway. So, I know that, and you know, and I know that it's an inconvenience for those that want to have people over or whatever, but typically there aren't a lot of cars parked on Prairie, at least South Prairie.
So- I didn't see any parked there.
Right.
But is there any towns that do, where in the winter, there would be, I mean, can you coexist parking and bike lanes? Does that exist anywhere?
Just don't write tickets.
Just don't write tickets?
Actually, I was just down, I did an urban planning walking tour in Wicker Park and they had an interesting thing where they had parking was in the middle of the road. And the lanes were separated and the bikes were next to the road. The bike lanes were next to the cars down the middle of the road.
Yeah, there's space. That's nice. Because then you're not getting hit by open car doors as often. It's nice. And then you're protected from traffic going next to you when you're on your bike as well. Not that there's space to do that on Prairie Street, but it's a nice design.
So I believe the problem here is the amount of space available will not accommodate both a parking, the parking and bike lanes.
I meant taking turns. I knew the width wasn't there, but like in winter, the bike lanes are, I don't know if that, if there's a way to do that or not. I'm just thinking outside the box.
Or something like holiday parking. We've got the online overnight parking permit, where somebody can park on the street overnight, apply for the permit to do it. Could we do something like that during the holidays when somebody's expecting a large number of people at their house so that we give them the flexibility of having parking? At the same time, it's a time of year when you really don't expect to see the herd riding through. I know I wouldn't be out there in that kind of weather.
We now, we now do have bikers in our town that bike any of the 365 days of year with their fat tires on the snow and the ice.
Well, we're clearly, for those few, there's more people that celebrate holidays and have people over at the same time.
We've had some Thanksgivings and Christmases where it's been pretty warm. So, and there have been people out riding. So, I mean, I understand the train of thought, but I don't think we can use that because it's just too temperamental. I think people are going to be using that all year round.
I'll testify that snow is not a deterrent. In my previous life, I wrote a newspaper article about a Fermilab employee who carries a plow behind his. And he still does it, so. There are people out there biking in February because of this guy, so.
Well, they can still go around parked cars. They're doing it today.
For sure. And I just say if cars want to park there, we just don't ticket them.
Right.
And I didn't realize it was $120 for a bicyclist to blow a stop sign. Perhaps we should revisit that price. That's expensive.
I think it would be difficult for you to figure out from a motorist's point of view when it was okay to park in bike lanes and when it was not.
Yeah, I'm not looking for an answer tonight. I'm wondering if any other community does it or is, if there's a way to get around that, like outside. I mean, it doesn't seem natural, but I'm sure we're not the first community to debate the use of, you know, between parking and bike lanes.
There is parking available on the side streets that are off of Prairie as well. So that is definitely an option for people who want to park near those homes.
Amy, do you want to say something?
Um, I obviously agree with a lot of what's been said already, so I won't, I won't try to repeat it. I'm, I'm kind of piecing in my head, kind of reframing the conversation moving forward, if this is the direction we want to go, that I promote walkability and bikeability because I see the downtown being, you know, the lifeblood of our community and it's such a productive chunk of land that we need to protect, we need to promote, and we need to see people using our streets. People are kind of the indicator species of a healthy environment and a healthy downtown environment. So the more people that are out, the better, right? So, I keep going back in my head of thinking, trying to think about pedestrians and cyclists as the solution. Like they are the solution to our high infrastructure costs because, you know, their impact is a lot lower than cars. And they're part of the solution because if we build for people and bicyclists, we build more compactly, we build more efficiently. We're not, we're not spreading ourselves too thin. Our infrastructure, you know, our taxes don't have to spread as far to pay for the infrastructure that we have. If everyone is existing within a walking or biking shed and only patronizing their local businesses and start operating in a lot smaller scale, then all of those, the sales tax dollars stays closer to town and stays more productive. So, in my head, pedestrians and cyclists are the solution. They're not the problem. This isn't a problem we're trying to solve of like, gosh, how do we drive around bicyclists? Do we want to reframe it and be like, how do we get more bicyclists? We need, we need more cyclists. We need more pedestrians to be a healthier and financially resilient town in a thousand. It's just so interconnected. So, I would, that would be my suggestion, is that we start thinking in that term. Pedestrians and cyclists are the solution. They're not the problem. They are the solution.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this tonight? If you want to come up and just give your name for the record?
I'm Brett Garrett. I got to stop coming to these things because I didn't want to talk tonight and that's what I told you last time. So, um-
You're here again.
Yeah, right. So, um, well, there's any number of things. But the two that I definitely wanted to mention was that video. I'd like to think I could sit there for a couple hours and come back with a video of people actually stopping at the stop sign. And then I could cut out all the video of people running the stop sign and show you, everybody stops at the stop sign. That was obviously, I don't know, anyways, that bothered me. But the thing that bothered me the very, very most was that I heard twice that if he didn't get his way, he was going to go talk to the police and have them target bikers. I didn't hear anything about he would start having them stop every car that rolls through the stop sign or anything like that. It was, you know, maybe I'll have to have the police come out and start giving $120 tickets to bikers. And maybe that's well within rights and everything else. I honestly don't know. Again, that's me just coming up here because I'm just acting instead of actually thinking. But it seemed awfully scary to hear that. Two different times he said, "If, if I don't get", he didn't say, "If I don't get what I want", but he certainly implied that if these bike lanes go in, then the police will be on notice to start ticketing bikers. And that is frightening to me, if he's able to do that. So, I guess that's all I have. Thanks.
If I could just respond to that too, real quick. And just so you know, this isn't an isolated thing. So, and to defend, to defend our mayor, you know, we've had an issue with cyclists for quite some time. And everyone has a right, but this is, I think this is just bringing to a head. So, you know, so this is, we've talked about enforcement. This isn't the first time we brought it up.
Okay. Sure. I apologize if, I understand that those people were obviously blowing through the stop sign. I'm sorry. I wasn't defending that in any way. It's just, I didn't hear, maybe we'll try and make Laurel and Prairie Street safer by ticketing everybody. But, so I guess that's where I'm coming from. I, obviously, the bikers were running the stop sign. So I wasn't trying to say that that shouldn't happen. I'm just saying it seemed like, it was like, "I'm going to get the bikers because this is happening", as opposed to, "We will enforce the stop sign at this, with a stop sign at this intersection to make it safer." I don't know. It just seemed-
You're totally fine.
Yeah.
That's totally fine.
Hi, Mary Beth Stevens, 515, 511, and 527 South Prairie are the residents that I own. Only keep you a minute. I don't know where else to go with this. I am not against the bikers. I think we should have bikers. I need to see them safe. But the remark that we can just go around the corner and park, you know, if you look at the end of South Prairie Street, the people that are on the east side cannot go around the corner. They cannot park going down the street. This lane, this bicycle safety thing, only it ends at Pine Street and then we're putting them in a dangerous thing down Hart Road, which on one side, they'll be on the sidewalk. So apparently, that's not, that's not the problem. But we're also encouraging it by putting these lanes here. So, again, we need to try, please, to figure out something, even if it's one or two places for us to park. If you want us to go over on Pine Street, wow, that's a narrow street. And try to get down there with cars parked on each side, you can hardly get a car through. And I don't have my pictures with me and I have taken them. That's very heavily populated already. There's homes there that have apartments in them and they're using that. So now we're going to go over, are we going to have double deck? I don't get it. I mean, there are some issues that need to be looked at. And if I don't continue to ask, you know. The other thing is, I know you heard it, the semis, you tell me that they can come through, they can use our road as long as they're going locally. This has increased drastically over the year. And there's so much industrial that's out on Mitchell and Hart and stuff. It's going to increase more next year. So please take that into consideration. These cars are not coming into town. I have followed specifically this white truck that has nothing on it. I should have taken a license plate, but I followed him. He went down to Prairie, turned onto Wilson, took Wilson out to Kirk and turned. These are, I think they're being misdirected with some of the big industrial stuff that's coming up with the GPSs and stuff. Something needs to be looked in on this because now we're going to have encouraging more bicyclists. I don't care, put 1,000 on them a day, but let's keep them safe. And putting these big semis that are coming on the road is not going to help to make this road safer. I just don't understand why we can't come up with a little more money to widen an already too narrow road. I get it. We don't have fundings, but somewhere we have fundings for other things. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you all. I don't want to regurgitate. John Gamble, chairman of the bike commission. I just want to thank you all again for seriously looking at all this. But I want to remind us of a few things. I was looking through this, I think all the, I'm not going to rehash the bike versus cars points that have been made. I think they were all very well made. But there were a couple of things that I think we might have missed. One is, we are a bike-friendly community and as such, we have certain duties. We follow the four Es: education, enforcement, engineering, and evaluation. Okay? As a commission, we have started on the education. And we have recognized, and thank you Marty for bringing it up, because I wrote down, present options as a whole as to how bikes and cars can move safely through the community. That's been a challenge. We've been trying to figure that out. This is one of the most respectful towns as a bicyclist to ride through. In fact, a lot of times, cars cause issues because they stop to let us through and the other lane isn't clear. You know, and one of the things that we teach in bicycling is to be as predictable as anything. Anyway, so, we're working on education. We would love to boost those efforts. We are all for, I think, certain levels of enforcement. And we are for equal enforcement. If you're going to enforce stopping at stop signs on bikes, it needs to be the same for cars. And we need to figure that out. Fermilab does a wonderful job with it. And we actually patterned some of our ideas off of how they do it. They started with education. They warned everybody. They said, "This is what we're going to do", and they do it. It was really interesting because Thursday night, I rode through Fermilab with a group from Batavia. And in Batavia, it was basically like the video. Everybody watches the signs. If there's no cars, they're going to roll through. But they slow, they're respectful. They stopped if there were cars. Once they got to Fermilab, because they knew the rules, that group of 20 stopped at every stop sign. So, that to me really comes from education to enforcement. It doesn't start with enforcement or I think you're going to lose the cycling population in this town. So, I did, what I'm hearing mostly tonight, but what we're really here for tonight is the engineering part of it. And it seems silly that we're here again because- is the engineering part of it, and it seems silly that we're here again, because this has already been approved. And this is, for cycling, this is the safest solution, it slows traffic down, it does tie our routes together, it provides us with a corridor, it, it's just a win-win. You don't get the opportunity back. If you turn it down and you overrule it, you're done. You're not gonna redo Prairie again, you're not gonna give a bike lane again. I mean, some of you remember the Houston Crossing, some of you don't, some of you may regret it, some of you may be happy about it, but that was a mistake, and we're not getting that back again, and now you can see some of the ramifications of it, because of what's happening at McKee, because now we have a lane that goes there, and you're putting more, anyway, I don't want to beat a dead parrot, whatever. I think I hit it all, I have a few more notes, but I appreciate your consideration, I appreciate your time. I'd like to keep Batavia bike-friendly as possible. I don't want to alienate residents, but sometimes, we have to do what's the best for the entire community. And I do, we do want to take on that challenge, and we would love to work with the police department, as well as the community as a whole, to figure out what is the best way to do education and enforcement in this. And then we can start the fourth E, which we're also doing all the time, but evaluation. So, thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to speak on this topic? And to wrap this up, I guess I'll ask the mayor, do you want us to reconsider what we've already approved for Prairie Street?
I mean, that's the council's decision, I, I just would hope that we would keep this at the forefront of our considerations, and we try to work with the Bicycle Commission so that we can bring forth some community education. I don't think that we can just continue to ignore all these people running these stop signs on bicycles.
Right, and it's, and I will say, it's not just Prairie Street, I test drive cars every day on the west side of town, and it's all over town that this happens. So, I think it's something that, in my mind, again, to me, the first thing is education. People have to know that they have to follow the laws, and if we have to get to the point where we have to ticket them, we have to ticket them, and I think the same thing should happen to drivers.
Right. Just, just to put this in perspective, you know, that, at Pine and, and Redant, that stop sign there is like a launching pad for cars. So, I mean, they, they don't just roll it, they launch out of there. So, it's not just bikes, we have a problem with, with all sorts of vehicles in this town. So, you know, to, to ice, you know, to kind of focus on bikes in particular, I, I don't think is the, is the right thing, because we, we have issues all over the place.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree, we do have issues all over the place. Is there any way we could change the ticket price on a bike? Because I, I would like to see enforcement, but $120 for a 16-year-old kid?
They're only gonna do it once, then.
Right.
But would it be the same for a bike?
I got a warning ticket for rolling a stop sign, and I've been really good.
I, I agree. But I don't know if it should be the same for a bike as it is a car.
The short answer is yes, we can reconsider it if we bring it back to committee, and I would join you in saying we should revisit that price.
I would like to see some enforcement on the stop signs.
We can review that.
Bring us back to what the options are for ticket prices, okay? Next up will be a discussion on recreational cannabis dispensaries. Marty, I'll let you start this off, as Community Development Chair.
So, as this, I guess we're gonna lay some, so that we make this fair and not turn into a, set the expectations of a Naperville discussion going till 2:30 a.m. I think so that everybody knows, on topics where we have had a lot of public interest, we want to make sure that it's equitable, that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. So, tonight, we're not voting on anything tonight, we're listening to what people want to say about it, so we can decide where we are going to move forward. In the interest of making sure that we get as many people heard as possible, we're gonna keep this to three minutes tonight, so that, come up to the podium, state your name, you don't have to give your address, just for the record, and then it is going to be time kept by Alderman Miller.
Yes.
There's a little clock break.
And if you haven't had an opportunity to put your name on the list, feel free to do that while I'm giving my presentation, and then, Anthony, if I could ask you to bring the list to Chairman Wolf at some point, thank you.
I'm gonna make another rule on the fly, we're gonna do four, I think that would probably be, we're not super packed, I'm going off of kind of the other topics we've had of interest, campaign, where we've kind of limited it, but I think we have enough people to be able to manage kind of a four-minute.
Yeah, there's only four on the list right now.
Okay, well, then.
So...
When we have 25 or 30 people on the list, we have to limit it.
Then if we get back through and more people want to talk, we'll be here, but not till 2:30 a.m. So, obviously, everyone is aware, on June 25th of this year, Governor Pritzker has signed the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act into law. This makes marijuana, no matter what we decide on dispensaries, it will make on January 1st, 2020, marijuana legal in this community. We do not have a say about regulating whether or not people are in possession or can smoke marijuana, so, just so that we're setting expectations. Tonight's discussion, we're going to be discussing, the state has the authority to license the cannabis business, but we have the ability to prohibit or significantly limit locations of the businesses within the jurisdictions by our ordinances. Zoning will be needed for cultivation centers, craft growers, infusers, processors, transportation organizations, dispensaries. The city currently has zoning regulations that address some, but not all of these types of cannabis businesses. The city also has the authority to determine if consumption of cannabis will be allowed on premises at a dispensary. The city attorney, via Roman Chuckle next to me, previously provided to council a PowerPoint presentation, which is online and attached to the agenda, outlining the Cannabis Regulation Act. The presentation breaks down key aspects of the act, which include cannabis possession, consumption, licensing, local municipal control, expungements, and taxation. Another presentation, also attached to tonight's agenda, prepared by staff, follows the legal presentation and identifies the impact of the legislation on various city departments, including police, fire, finance, and community development. Our staff is looking direction, for direction from us as to whether council will continue the current prohibition on recreational dispensaries contained in the zoning code, or, in the alternative, if council wishes to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries and other cannabis-related businesses within the city of Batavia. I believe the mayor wanted to speak first on this, and then we'll go ahead and, if anyone wants to discuss this beforehand, and then go to the public.
Thank you, I just want to give a little political parameter to this whole discussion, so everybody knows it, totally upfront about it. As you all remember, we had a discussion, and we had a vote, and I signed the ordinance that allowed for the sale of medical marijuana in the city of Batavia, and we also approved the ordinance allowing for, zoning ordinance allowing for growing marijuana, medical marijuana in the community. We put ourselves out there, we didn't get one of the licenses, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation amongst officials in the area as to who gets these licenses and what does it take to get one, and I don't want to get into that, but there's, there's, there's 47 licenses, I think now they're gonna give out under the new law, and there's 1,260 cities in the state of Illinois, and so we'll see who those winners are in that perspective. What I do want to share with you is, is that, as the mayor of this town, I try to keep a handle on what's going on, and I have a very, I'm, I'm blessed in this town to have a police department and a fire department like I do. They keep me very well apprised as to what's going on, how much activity we have, what's, what's happening, and I will tell you that, as near as I can tell, right now, our drug problem may be mar- much beyond marijuana, but in the widespread of the drug problem, it may be about as bad as it's ever been in the community of Batavia right now. We just got a lot of stuff going on, we got drug dealers fighting with other drug dealers, we got people who don't understand drugs taking drugs and ended up in ambulance calls, we have a lot of people trying it for a gateway to do something. But I will tell you, the thing that I am most disturbed about, about this whole discussion, as is, as the mayor of this town for a number of years, perhaps the most distressing activity I've ever had to be involved with, and I needed to be there, and I needed to be involved with it, is having parents of children who died from a drug problem come down to my office, or ask me to meet them at a coffee shop or whatever, and we had discussions about what happened in their family, how did this happen, what was the gateway, how did this all come to be? And you talk about something that, and there's too many, I'm not gonna say a number, but there's way too many in Batavia to have had this happen already, and I can testify that it's been a very, very bad scene here. So, we've had all these people have this very terrible thing happen in their lives to their families, and it's been very destructive, and so because of that, as the mayor of this town, I do not have it in my conscience to sign any ordinance that allows for the sale of recreational marijuana in the city of Batavia. So, you guys can go ahead and pass an ordinance and say that you want to have it, you will then get a veto from me, and I will send you a written veto, according to state statute, and the city attorney has been alerted, and he's already to help me write it out, it should be a pretty easy deal to do. I send you a veto, and then to override my veto, it's going to take 10 votes of the city count, 10 of the 14 of you will have to vote to, to do this. So, I just want to put everybody on notice that that's the track this thing is on, because Jeff Shelkey is not going to sign any ordinance for recreational marijuana in the city of Batavia. And that's just the way I feel, after I'm pretty damaged myself by what I've had to deal with, with all these families that have had tragedy in their, in their lives because of the drug program, program. I've had several tell me, well, marijuana was the start, it was the gateway, and then we went to LSD, and then we got to heroin, and then we ended up in opioids, and it's just been a really bad scene, and it's one that we should try everything we can to stop happening in this town. And I appreciate what the state's done, we got a state law that allows this to happen, and I've had members of the Illinois General Assembly tell me, well, when I voted for this, you know, I'm fearful now that what I've done in my vote is I voted a legacy on myself. And this is one vote that I made in the State General Assembly that's probably gonna follow me around for the rest of my life. I'm gonna be remembered as the guy who voted to legalize marijuana in the state of Illinois, and then we'll see what happens when this thing really kicks in. But, you know, I, I just want to share with you that there's a lot of implications to this that go way beyond the first vote that you make here, and this is one that doesn't go away, this will be with us for a long, long time, and I'm gonna tell you right now where I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be saying, well, I never signed any ordinance for recreational marijuana in the city of Batavia. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to start? Want to have Laura's part?
Sure, I just have this brief presentation, because Roman did such an excellent job setting forth all of the most important legal aspects of the new law. I wanted to just give a presentation that's based on conversations that staff have had in terms of how we see this actually affecting the city government in Batavia. So, there are slides here that reference the effects on police, fire, and finance, and then also in community development, we want to go over the, those aspects of zoning that are currently allowed under our current city regulations, and then a discussion about how those things may change based upon the decisions that you make here. Overview of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, as we said, this is going to be effective January 1st of next year. I guess the most important takeaway from here is that last bullet point, we have no ability, as the city of Batavia, to prohibit use. The legislation is going to limit municipal authority to control the manufacturing, sale, and use through our zoning ordinances, that is what we have the, the power to do. We also have some power to tax in the event that we allow the sale of recreational. So, first, I'd like to take a look at the department that's probably impacted the most here, is going to be law enforcement, and maybe I'll point out as we go along the way whether this is an impact that's gonna happen any bit, anyway, regardless of whether or not we have recreational dispensaries, and this would be one of them, civil law enforcement. So, while local governments can't legislate against the use, they can be the enforcement mechanism for people who are using in a prohibited place, such as public places, like streets and parks, motor vehicles, near someone who is under the age of 21, near an on-duty school bus driver, police officer, or firefighter, or corrections officer, and just to note that property owners may prohibit use on their own private property. We are, we do have the ability to have civil law violations, so we can state what the penalties for those civil law violations are, such as cannabis possession under the age of 21, open consumption in those places where it is prohibited, and then also possession if you're over 21, but not in the legal packaging. This, while, you know, there, there may be some sense of, like, revenue because of the penalties that are assessed, we have to realize that this is something that takes time to enforce, and not only in, when the act is committed, but then thereafter in the ability, or the obligation to appear at hearings, and any legal costs that might be associated with that as well. Selling to under 21, you know, there's a difference here, with liquor, cigarettes, and video gaming, we do locally have a licensing authority, and because we have that licensing authority, we also have an enforcement authority to ensure that people are living up to the, what they promised to do in exchange for having that license, and one of those is not to sell to underage individuals. The state has total control over licensing when it comes to cannabis dispensaries, and so all of the licensing and oversight, including compliance, rests with the state. So, this is gonna be a matter that's enforced by the state police. Now, the state police do have a specific unit, because we have the medical dispensaries already, and so they, they have responsibility for monitoring the municipal dispensaries. DUI is problematic for, for law enforcement currently, while they have established a level of five nanograms of THC or more in blood, or 10 nanograms in urine as the intoxication level, there currently is no effective test for this. Furthermore, the Illinois State Police Crime Lab has indicated that they will not have the ability to perform these tests, so we need to find a different lab to send these to. The closest lab here in the Chicago area is the University of Chicago, but we can imagine that they will probably be pretty overwhelmed with the number of tests that they're being asked to conduct. And then there's the fact, and that this is still federally illegal, and this is really the effect to law enforcement that is different, depending upon what your decision is with regard to the recreational dispensaries, because this is largely a cash business, and so there may be tremendous amounts of cash that are on hand at these facilities, which can make them a target for crime. Also, medical calls for service, there's a concern that people who are inexperienced with use of cannabis may overconsume, and also that children may, if the package is available to them, that there may be poisoning of children, unintentional ingestion of the cannabis. But, we hope to prevent that by utilizing public education campaigns aimed at, you know, trying to prevent those things from happening, and our fire department does not anticipate an inordinate increase in the calls for service. And our fire department does not anticipate an inordinate increase in the calls for service based on the fact that medical marijuana has already been out there and is being used currently. The financial implications. I, I think that there is the impression that based upon experience in other states, that this is going to be a windfall of cash for municipalities. But one of the implications of the state being the sole, having the sole licensing function is that that's really where the majority of the revenue is, is generated is in the, the licensing part of it. However, the statute does provide the municipalities, of what they collect as the state tax, they are going to return 8% of that to municipalities on a per capita share. And that is meant to defray the costs of the impact of the legalization of recreational cannabis. Things like crime prevention, training and interdiction efforts. Also, a municipality has the ability to implement an additional 3% local sales tax on top of what our 2% home rule tax is. So in all, it would be 5% of sales is what we would get as a revenue, potential revenue if we were to allow a recreational cannabis dispensary. So if for instance, a dispensary had $1 million in sales, that would translate to approximately $50,000 in local sales tax. Our current zoning code allows cultivation centers and also medical dispensaries. The medical dispensaries may be located no closer than 1,000 feet to any school or licensed daycare. No drive-through is allowed and they have to be closed from 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM. The cannabis dispensaries, the recreational dispensaries are currently prohibited under our zoning code. So if we were to change, well, you know, some municipalities are asking the question, do they want to prohibit recreational dispensaries? Our code already contains a prohibition, so what we would be doing is removing the prohibition in order to allow those. And also there are things that are not covered by our current code and those would be infuser organizations, craft growers, transporting organizations and processing organizations. So we will need to address whether those are allowed and then any restrictions that apply to those. So just laying out and framing the question, your options are to continue to prohibit recreational dispensaries or to allow them as a permitted use or to allow them as a conditional use so that they would still have to go through the plan commission process. And then if you do allow the recreational dispensaries, we have to decide if onsite consumption will also be permitted. Do you have any questions for me?
One, one practical question. Do we have cash counters?
We do not.
Like the Cummins Allens, the big, the big ones?
Peggy, we do not have cash counters, do we? The big shuffling bill machines? We do not.
I guess for, just for clarity.
Yes.
Edibles were discussed in there. Edibles do not fall under this and they are currently regulated by the Department of Agriculture.
Actually, all of the cannabis will be under Department of Agriculture.
Right. But as far as CBD or any of the edibles, those are already in this community being sold and they don't need any special.
CBD, not the THC.
Sorry. Right. Not, not the THC level.
THC edibles will be under this. CBD edibles are not.
Correct. And that's where I want to kind of make the distinction.
Sure.
There is a lot coming at us and there's a lot of terms, there's a lot of products that communities have not been exposed to.
Correct.
And that's kind of where I am with this. I take a slightly different tact in that our hands are tied in that it is legal. It is going to be in this community no matter what. Do we say to our residents fend for yourselves and go get what's out there? We had Department of Public Health in here a couple of weeks ago describing the small amount of fentanyl that can go into marijuana and people will die. We are already having astronomical 400% deaths of opioid and heroin deaths in the past year. That was sobering and the amount of fentanyl that it has taken to kill a human being is minute. Left unregulated by saying, no, we don't want it here, we have no control of knowing where, what residents are buying. And as a safety concern and a public health issue, I would prefer that we craft legislation that we know what people are buying, where they're buying it, so that we can adequately have informed residents make decisions about consumption of a legal product. Dan?
I would absolutely agree with you, but the mayor opened this discussion by saying 10 of us needed to step forward. We probably should figure out if 10 of us are even willing to talk about this because otherwise this could be a very short meeting.
Well, I guess we can take a straw poll and are there enough people that wish to not say where it's going to go or putting it? Do we want to have the discussion about what parameters we would discuss with what permitting looks like? Can I see a show of hands and want to have the discussion? So I believe we're unanimous in having the discussion of moving it forward. It does not tie anybody to certain votes or the details of it, but I think we want to hear more about what our options are and that we're not going to be saying, no, we're done discussing it.
If, just, just, you know, given that we, most of us, not all of us raise our hands and not to beat a dead horse, but we don't have an option here but to deal with the horse that's out of the barn. You know, whether you, whether you like marijuana, whether you're against it, I personally don't condone it, but we have to deal with it. So this isn't, this is not an easy, going to be an easy discussion at all. And, you know, there's going to be, you know, the law of unintended consequences either way is going to, is going to come into, come into play here. So just for those in the audience to know that every single one of us up here, this is not an easy discussion to have, but it's a discussion we have to have because we have issues in this town with drugs. We have to talk about it and it's uncomfortable, but we have to talk about it.
Laura, can you give a, do you have the number of how many licenses will be out there that the state is going to issue?
Yes. As a matter of fact, so there are 55 medical dispensaries currently. And after January 1st, they're going to fast track if those 55 dispensaries would like to add recreational use as well. In addition to that, there are 47 additional licenses available in 2020. And then in 20, I'm going to go with Roman put together.
Laura, can I just clarify for that?
Sure.
It's 47 licenses for basically Cook County and the surrounding counties. That includes Austin, Kane County, Will County, Page County, McHenry County, Lake County, et cetera. So that's 47 licenses throughout all those areas. Then I think, my notes from according to statute, then they're looking to add 110 additional licenses by January 2020, 2021, I should say. And I think the legislation caps the total number of licenses at 500 at some point in the future.
Mm-hmm.
But between now and next May, besides the medical dispensaries, additional 47 could be in the Cook County and the Coller, Cook County and the Coller counties.
Thank you.
And I believe in the 522-page legislation.
Did you, you read it?
I did read it. I did read it. It also describes how communities are going to be prioritized for certain, for the way the licenses are even going to be doled out.
Right.
So just because they're issuing X amount, the criteria spells out where it's going to fall. So we may never have one to begin with, just because there may not be. We have St. Charles and North Aurora that have medical marijuana dispensaries.
Yes.
That would be in line out of that 47 for converting over to. So what I'm trying to highlight is I think the state, in their wisdom or not wisdom of the entirety of the, learned a lesson from the Denver model, which was let all the horses run free and, and let it be as it may. We have a certain amount, we kind of have to deal with that number, but I don't think it's going to be 800 in our community and Katie bar the door.
I have a question for clarification. Is it 55 medical ones that can add it? Is that part of the 47? So they get part of the 47 or is it 55 plus the 47?
It's 55 plus the 47.
So anyone that's medical already could add that.
Yes.
Recreational component and then 47 additional.
And another 110 following the.
Yeah, another year.
222 in two years, within two years.
Right.
The other thing I will add to that is if my memory serves me right, the medical dispensaries, they can also apply for a second location so long as within a certain distance from their current location. I believe the distance is like 1500 feet.
Right.
So.
That's what sticks in my mind from reading through pages.
Anything else, Laura?
No.
Anyone else? Mark?
Yeah, I guess I can start the discussion more towards thoughts. I mean, it's trying to take the emotion out of it because if I go back in my history, I would definitely say, no, I don't want it. I had, you know, I saw what happened to kids in high school and just the way they acted. I didn't want to be around that crowd. But you know what? That's not me anymore and it's personal responsibility. We talked about Tobacco 21 and I said, no, it's a personal responsibility. We'll let the state figure that out and then we'll abide by what the state does. So here's where we're at. We're abiding by what the state has to say. They've, they've made it legal and whether or not we have zero or 10 dispensaries in Batavia, people in Batavia will smoke and there's nothing we're going to stop that from happening. Nothing we can do about that. There's, in my mind, there's a lot bigger issues out there when you look at this. It's, it's alcohol. It's, it's just the new alcohol. And alcohol is a drug. It does things to your brain when you drink it. You can die from alcohol poisoning. There's no reported case of anybody dying from marijuana poisoning. Just hasn't happened, everything I've read. I don't know if you know, 40 million people are addicted to nicotine. 18 million people are addicted to alcohol. 4.2 million people are addicted to marijuana. And that's mostly psychological rather than a physical addiction that comes because it happens with nicotine and alcohol. 93 million US adults are obese. So we're talking 4.2 million and we're talking about all these tens of millions of others that have other bigger problems. I really don't think this is a huge problem and it comes down to personal responsibility. And I'm not opposed to it. I'm not going to do it myself. Most people aren't going to be able to do it when you really look at it because companies are still going to say, sorry, we're going to do drug testing. I don't think this is going to be a huge proliferation, but right now what happens is people get it illegally. And when they get it illegally, that goes to the fentanyl, you don't know what they're getting. I was at a concert a month ago, I smelled it, but wait, it's illegal. How can I smell it? Nobody should be doing this. People are going to do it no matter what. And if we follow some of those guidelines that we already have and the vague guidelines that are in the law, it probably is not going to be on any one of the streets that people go down every day because it's not supposed to be near schools and daycares and parks. It's vague, the way it's written in the law because it talks about advertisement and I know we're waiting for some clarification on that. But that would really limit it to our industrial parks if you look at a map.
And the point you bring up about the THC content, this is not your parents or grandparents' marijuana. It's completely different. The lab-created strains that are out there, the content that is out there, the content that is available for people to choose, I think, from what I've heard from people that haven't done it since the seventies or eighties that are like, well, it's legal now, or have never done it and are going, well, it's legal now, so I'm going to. Without providing some of that guidance to let people know that this isn't what you may have thought it was, having someone with a little bit of knowledge behind so that people don't overdose, so that people don't take, and I don't know if anybody here has any personal experience with going to a dispensary and, Dan?
I'm not sure if anybody saw the Daily Herald story that ran, I think it was in yesterday's edition. It was a great write-up about this sort of posh-looking dispensary called The Honey Pot. You name it, every pun inside that place. I was in Toronto last week, that's why I missed the meeting. I was there for vacation not to buy weed. And if you want to talk about an uncomfortable discussion, Scott, my mother is in the front I had a wonderful vacation. I stepped in there and I said, hey, I'm a stupid American and I would like to see what your dispensary is like. The guy took me in, there were only about 20 of us inside the shop. And what I appreciated about it was it was a consultative sort of sales experience. The guy had this iPad, he was flipping through and he asked me, are you here for recreational? Are you here for, for medical? And I said, well, I'm actually not buying anything. I have to go back to Chicago. But he described the pricing, he showed me the different types of flowers that they had. He said that we don't sell edibles here. Edibles being, as I mentioned before, one of the things I'm terrified about because my experience with edibles is I go to the emergency room or it does nothing for me. Kids, I have said, I'm afraid are going to stumble upon an edible. That's where the problem is going to be in our community and that, that goes to the mayor's point. But this guy did such a great job of talking to me and trying to understand what my experience was. He's like, did you smoke this in college? You know what you're doing? I said, again, dude, I'm not here to buy anything, I'm just here to study it. But he took me around, he showed me all these, these contraptions. There's a vaporizer that costs 800 Canadian dollars and the sales tax revenue off of that, I'm, it's fascinating how much money you could spend if you wanted to get into marijuana nowadays. What I, what I walked away from that experience though, I, I figured that maybe we could learn something from what these, these other communities have done. I'm sure everyone's done their research here. I pulled headlines, read stories over the last couple of weeks. I was surprised to learn that in California, of the 482 municipalities, do you guys know how many municipalities opted out of this? 80%. Only 20% of the communities in California are even taking a part in this. Colorado saw a decline in opioid prescriptions since this was legalized. There has been a graduated introduction in Colorado of additional services, things like delivery to combat DWYs. There are now entertaining tasting rooms, which is an issue we're going to have to, have to determine. There were dramatic fluctuations in every community regarding black market. A friend of mine told me, you know what, you can, you can go to Pizza Hut and you can ask them for a pizza, but if you don't have money, they're not going to give you a pizza. But your dealer, he might front you a little bit for a couple of weeks. These dispensaries aren't going to do that. There's going to be a black market and it's going to be here for a while. Price fluctuations from 2015 to 2019, as high as $2,000 for a pound, going down to $800 a pound. Today, a joint ranges from $5 to $13 for something that is considered high quality. And every study that I read said that the social impact, social impacts or crime rates were either negligible or unfair if you read certain reports. There was targeted enforcement maybe near a dispensary that saw an uptick in, in crimes that were committed in those neighborhoods. So when I walk away from this, I think that there's a bit of hypocrisy that we have when we talk about this. There are, everyone has their vice, minus food and cigarettes. Some people like gambling, some people like video gambling. We have allowed video gambling to come into our community. We have expanded liquor sales to include gas stations here and we salivated at the opportunity to hand a medical license to someone that would eat up our power. There's a tremendous amount of hypocrisy when we talk about this issue. So there has to be some sort of compromise. All the emails I got said, don't do this. All the people I spoke to one-on-one said, I don't care about this issue. I'm certainly not going to stand in your way if you want to have one of these things. So is the compromise to keep it how we have it and just include recreational in our industrial parks? I found that that seemed to be a reasonable solution. That is one that I can go to sleep with. That is one that I feel comfortable looking my mother in the eye and saying that that's something I think. and saying that that's something I think that ten of us can get behind and override a mayor's veto. Um, we need to talk this through until we get ten of us. I would prefer fourteen of us agree on something. Uh, I've always said that the ten-to-fours are the strongest votes that we have, the twelve-to-twos. If we can get this unanimous, um, that is something I think our, our community would, would be, would be happy with. Thank you.
Somebody?
Um, I'll echo what Dan said. And then I'd add that, you know, watching Laura go through the presentation, it highlighted a whole lot of things that are going to impact the community because it's legal statewide, whether or not we allow a dispensary here in town or not. Um, and those things have the potential to cost us some money, just by their very nature. Um, by having a dispensary in town and allowing, uh, for that, uh, gives us an opportunity to bring in some funds that'll help offset those costs. There's, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity. You know, Marty is, I think we'd be kind of cutting off her nose to spite her face to forego that opportunity. I mean, these are, the state is on, and as people have said, the state has unleashed this on us. They've said it's legal. Uh, you are now free to deal with it. And this is one way, I think, we can deal with it responsibly. I think, as others have pointed out, you know, the, having control of or an understanding of who's selling, what they're selling, where they're selling in town, um, is very important. And also, taking the approach of, uh, using this as an opportunity to offset some of the costs that we're going to bear, one way or another, I think only makes sense.
And you make an absolutely valid point. Knowing that we know it's going to be here, do we tax those that are going to be consuming to pay for the education, the enforcement, those that are going to be there? Or do we not accept those funds and go to everybody else out here and say, your property taxes are going to fund another person's legal consumption of marijuana? I would prefer that if they're going to use, they pay for it, and they pay us for the use, instead of us subsidizing there.
That was one point I wanted to make, was that, just like with the gas tax that we have, we put, uh, restriction on that, that we wanted to use some of that for road funds, not just put it into the general fund. It's the same type of thing, that we would use that tax money as maybe our next officer. You know, I mean, I really think that that's something that we should consider when we get to that point, if we're going to pass this, that that would be part of what we would use the revenue for.
Tony?
Yes, um, I don't necessarily agree. And in fact, I have some very valid points and a lot of things I can agree with that have been brought up. Uh, one thing that I have felt very strongly about with this legislation and have supported it from the beginning, uh, for social justice issues. Um, as you'll recall, it wasn't that long ago, people were getting slaughtered down in Mexico. It was a bloodbath. The cash crop was, was marijuana. The cartels, we were selling marijuana to America. It's still happening. We have an opportunity to take away some of that market from them. That's one point. The other more important part of the social justice issue is, we incarcerate in this country more than China and Russia combined. That is shameful. And a large part of that is from marijuana. Nonviolent offenders, just possession of marijuana. And targeted, and, and very unfairly for people of color. Inordinately, people of color have been, uh, held to different standards than whites. So, legalizing marijuana, uh, it's been done in a number of other states. Illinois is unique because it was our legislator. It was the first, uh, state by legislative action and not by referendum. Um, in those other states, it was by referendum. Uh, I would contend that if there were referendum in Illinois, uh, we would have had the same results, because the majority of the population supports this. Um, with all that said, you know, I'm, I'm glad the state did this because it's about putting, it's about making things right in terms of these social justice issues. Along with that comes a, a whole host of other issues, uh, which we're dealing with here. Uh, I think we had some very valid points. It is here, even if the state, Illinois, didn't pass it. Um, I think, you know, I think the police department would probably agree, since, you know, Colorado and Michigan and all these other states, probably seeing more of it. Um, the thing with the, when it's, when it's, uh, regulated like that, the growing is regulated. You know what's in it. You know that, uh, they, they can regulate it more to, you don't always know. But you're more likely to know that and have more control of what the quality is and, and what, uh, what's there, uh, is, is a safeguard. Because it's, it's being used. Um, and I'd rather it be used from regulated sources than unregulated sources, which those unregulated sources left a whole lot of people dead in this world. And I have a big problem with that. And I think that, you know, we, we're moving forward with this. Mark, you brought up alcohol. Alcohol is way more dangerous, way more, uh, causes way more, uh, harm to a community in terms of safety. Um, that's, that's a reality. Um, yes, there are big concerns about, uh, our, our youth. But there's, it's out here. It's being used. You know, you go to a concert, you, it, it is around. There is no doubt about it. Um, so, you know, I think, um, I, you know, I, I kind of, I, I embrace the legislation for the social justice issue because I'm ashamed, as an American, that we've let this go on and let certain people be targeted and let, let, uh, the, you know, the war on drugs, we know it. It was a huge failure. And, and, uh, it empowered the, the black market and empowered crime and multinational, uh, criminal rings. And, uh, you know, this, this is a chance to, to put, to, to reverse that. And, you know, if, if it means we need to be part of regulating that, so be it. And I'd rather regulate and, and, and if, if this were solely about raising taxes, I would be adamantly opposed. Because that's, you know, raising money on, on, uh, on, on something like this is not, would, would not be, as debote for doing it. Uh, I would, I could not support. But, but to, to move forward and make things more right in this world, um, I, that's, that's where I stand.
I think, as, um, you kind of point out, everybody knows, I'm in a unique position of having been on the border during the war on drugs and what it saw. And the community that I was a police officer in, um, it's about the same size as this community. And within the last week, uh, one of their officers had to gun down a subject that shot at him. And a college party resulted in, uh, three college students being murdered and four others were, uh, shot. So, the three-hour drive from El Paso, where I was at, and you are absolutely right, the slaughter that was going on in Juarez and, um, the bodies that they were finding from the narco gangs, it is absolutely terrifying for what was going down there. And having seen that firsthand, I've got tons of pictures of me where I sat in front of seizing narcotics and drugs and cash. And did I feel I was doing the right thing? Absolutely. Do I also know there are other ways that we need to look at this? And we need to craft what we're doing with the laws that have been made by others that have, as we have said, kind of tied our hands. But they haven't tied our hands in our ability to regulate so that people know from a public safety issue what they are consuming. And not driving this into an underground situation in our community. I would rather people know that they buy it at this location and wherever we choose to put it in the industrial park, rather than selling it out in our corners or our neighbors' houses and driving it underground, where we don't know at that point. Mike?
Yeah, I would like to make a suggestion. Maybe we, at this point in time, we should let the residents speak, so we get their opinions. We can go on after that.
Yep. Anyone else from the public wish to come up? Do we have the...
I've got the list here.
Okay.
First up on the list is Duke Wall. Next up would be Dan Zedan.
Of course. Duke Wall, eight-one-one Manchester, Batavia, Illinois. And, uh, I'm here for selfish reasons. I, uh, I think that if you pass this measure and allow marijuana cannabis to be sold, it'll just give me another reason to try to convince my wife, I've been trying to convince her for years, to leave this crazy place. All of the things that go on around here, and I can't, I can't come to these meetings every doggone day. But it's just another reason for me to tell her that, you know, it's time to get out of here. It's time to go to places that we have people that think just the way we do. Not around here with the way you do. So, I hope that the, I hope the measure passes. I hope you get your cannabis, uh, dispensary that you all want, or some of you want. So, anyway, um, good luck with your endeavor. And I hope, uh, we, uh, can find a place to go. Let me give you this.
I'm done.
Next up, after Dan Zedan, will be, uh, Father Jim Parker.
I'm Daniel Zedan, that's Z-E-D-A-N, eight oh four Potawatomi Trail. I thought the presentation that the young lady, I guess Laura, gave, I thought, uh, hit on some points that I was going to make. What scares me about this is that marijuana is still a Schedule One drug. And as a result of that, all of these transactions are cash-based, which makes it ripe for crime and corruption. What makes it even worse is that we have a state that the real reason they passed this was because they needed to generate revenue, not because of the social justice. I'm sorry, you have your opinion, I have mine. But in either case, if we look at what the state has managed, regulated, or overseen over the past forty years, does anybody in this room really trust them to regulate that operation? To go into it and make sure it's being done properly? That crime is not running rampant inside? After all, we've only had four governors that have been thrown in prison, and how many state representatives, et cetera? So, are we really going to trust it? Yes, this has been foisted upon us. But we have no control. We have to rely on an agency or a state that is inept. But from a personal standpoint, it's even worse. I've been around the world. I've traveled to forty-four different countries. I've been to every state in the Union and just about every Canadian province. I've been to those towns, including places like Amsterdam, where they've allowed drugs. And crime has increased. Drug use has increased. I have a son who, through marijuana as a gateway, became addicted. He overdosed. Fortunately, they got him to a hospital in time, to where they saved his life. He's been clean now for eleven years. But he moved out of Batavia because of the drug problem in this town. And he won't come back. So, now we are going to pass an ordinance that brings even more into here? Yes, it'll be here. But if you really think it's going to be regulated that well by the state, let Geneva and St. Charles regulate it. Don't bring it into our town. Thank you.
I already asked at the beginning of the meeting, if you do not refrain from that, the next time I'll clear the room. I'm not going to joke about it. It's not something we want to do. Thank you.
My name is Father Jim Parker. I'm the pastor, Holy Cross in Batavia, twenty-three hundred Main Street. Um, I recommend that Batavia continue the current prohibition of cannabis. It would increase the problems that Mayor Jeff Schelke enumerated. It would increase and attract more problems having recreational dispensaries. And Mayor Jeff Schelke, God bless you. God bless you for having a moral backbone, for not giving into how society is going to the opposite direction of moral deluge. Several times, I've heard the city council say, I personally don't want it, but, yeah, things are out there. But I'm, I'm a Catholic priest, so I'm looking from the scriptures. But God's going to ask, what did you do? I put you in Batavia. Did you make it a better place? Or are you continuing to go down this path where more and more people are getting addicted to drugs? God's going to ask, yeah, it's out there. But did you make society better? Or did you make it worse? Guys, you gotta have a moral backbone. By God's providence, you're sitting here. You have a responsibility, just as I have responsibility to my parish, as a priest, as a pastor. I encounter many people that have so many addictions and problems and difficulties. To make it legal, to bring her to Batavia, this is further is going to increase those problems. Again, you're attracting all these different problems, uh, you will try to give more problems to our city. Laura Newman, when she said, like, we got a million dollars in sales in Batavia, fifty thousand back to the city. I don't think this is going to cover the cost of increased law enforcement. And then, with all due respect to Dan Jansen, uh, the studies that you cited, if you were to read more, there's a lot of studies that say just the opposite of what she said, that there's increased, um, uh, crime. So, I disagree. Then, let's see, I was trying to write down the things. So, the different business owners told me, Father, this is going to be horrible for Batavia. Hiring people, people who are drug-injured, the liabilities and injuries that come to that. I might as well just move out of Batavia. Another thing, there's a basic mistake that you guys have made, I mentioned. Legality is not always morality. Well, it's legal, therefore it's moral. That's not always the case. I'm pro-life, just one example. Just because someone says it's legal to kill a baby doesn't make it's moral. So, just because, well, now drugs, uh, drugs, that's legal, now it's moral. Don't fall for that. So many people don't have a backbone. They're looking, where's the money going to come from, right? Well, most of society does, so let's just go along with that. It takes a moral backbone to swim upstream, to go the other way. So, guys, guys, girls here, have a moral backbone. Now, it said, legal for those who are twenty-one, uh, could get that. But what's going to happen? The younger siblings are going to get that. In Colorado, the teen drug-related school expulsion decreased at a great rate once they made that legal. Um, I have all these different studies here. I'm sure you look up. I would just encourage everyone here, do more research on this. Do more research. Look at the state of Washington, Denver, a number of other states. Look at the whole picture, okay? And then ask yourself, ask yourself, am I making the world a better place? We're all here just a short period of time, right? A short period of time. Am I making the world a better place? Or am I just going along with all the, yeah, whatever, 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 the drugs, all that? So, Mayor Jeff Schelke, God bless you. I am so proud, uh, to have you as our mayor. Uh, you have my prayers, you have my backing, my congregation. I'm just going to just praise you to high heaven. And I'll just, um, I'm going to pray for all of you, that you make the right decision. Right decision. Don't, just don't, don't go the, the immoral path. Take the moral hibernate, all right? Make the world a better place, not a, not a worse place. Thank you.
Next up would be Terry Chikleki. Okay. Uh, next up will be Lois Dahlstrom.
Good evening. My name is Lois Dahlstrom. I live at four nineteen South Forest Avenue, here in Batavia. Lifelong resident. My uncle was a member of this council. And, um, I would just really want to urge you not to allow any of this zoning that would, um, change the way our community uses marijuana. You have that power. You have that power that we, as citizens, are giving you. And you need to be aware that many, many citizens, not just your opinion, not the social issue, are not, people are not in favor of this because of many reasons, as Mayor Schelke has said, and others. So, I want to urge you not to allow any medical dispensaries and, um, whether they're in the industrial park or wherever. Keep our zoning laws at zero, allowing, not allowing the miracle of the medical marijuana in our community. Thank you.
Next up would be Kent Hernandez.
Hi, my name's Kent Hernandez. I'm thirty-four years old, born and raised here. I used to say hi to Mayor Schelke when I was really little. So, I've been here for a while. I used to say hi to Mayor Shelkey when I was really little, so I've been here for a while. When I was in high school, property taxes were half what they are now. Parents moved out of town. My dad has had a bunch of houses here, he's sold some of them. It's not getting any cheaper to live here. And as we touched on earlier, we're not making the state laws, we're simply abiding by them. It's, you know, you mentioned earlier that there's going to be an underground market. There's already an underground market. I mean, I can tell you about it from when I was 16, and I can tell you about it now. I've been to the dispensaries. I know that it's taboo, but what we need is more education, just like Father said. We need education. And there's education on both sides of the table, but at the end of the day, I think there's the hysteria of what it used to represent, and I think that things change. Let me just look at my notes real quick. There's not, I'm surprised that any sort of business coming to Batavia is being questioned when it's being told where it's legal by the state. Again, it's not getting cheaper to live here, and there's, I don't know how many empty buildings I went past on my way here, retail spaces, and I know there's a bunch in the industrial park as well. I appreciate everybody's viewpoint as far as the people who are against it, but I really think that if you take like a Dr. Sanjay Gupta viewpoint of strongly against it, but then he actually educated himself, and saw that there's little children with epilepsy that want their medicine to be local, there's lots of different benefits, and it's more than just a party drug that people used back in the 60s. There's benefits that are good for the whole community, and I feel like it would be foolish of Batavia to turn this down, considering we have no say in whether it's legal, and it's already here. I mean, $50,000 on a million bucks, yeah, a million bucks sounds like a lot, but when the average sale is $50 to $100, and I know that for a fact, because I've been to Colorado, I've been to the dispensaries, people are walking in, spending 200, 300, 400 bucks each. I just see that Batavia could benefit from that. I mean, I don't want to get repetitive, but just consider my comments. Educate yourself. A lot of some of the things, a lot of the things that people have said earlier aren't necessarily true. You can't overdose on marijuana. It's physically impossible. But right now, I could leave here, and in Batavia, I could go and I could buy opioids, as long as I have a prescription, because that's cool. And the things that are actually killing people, liquor. The gateway is cigarettes. When I was 15, at the middle school, I tried cigarettes first. Then I tried weed. Then it was alcohol. I'm not going to keep going from there, but I'm just saying, it was cigarettes. And I can get any of those things here, but to say that I can't get weed, fine, I'll go to North Aurora and I'll spend my taxpayer money there. Thank you.
Next up would be Sylvia Kappel.
First of all, I want to address alcohol. You've called alcohol a drug, but alcohol can be used as a drink or a drug. I can drink alcohol without getting drunk. Then it is not a drug. In moderation, it is not a drug, and alcohol can even be beneficial, like red wine, for example. Do not compare alcohol to drugs without making that distinction. Recreational drugs in ordinary use impairs normal brain functioning. That's what drugs do. Is it ever right, is it ever good, to impair your brain function on purpose? Is it? Repeated use of marijuana leads to brain damage, especially in those whose brains are still developing, which is really up till about age 25. Let's drop the euphemisms. Marijuana causes brain damage. Structural damage, lower IQ, impulse control problems, depression, and more. Proponents will say, "Yeah, but some studies say there's no effect." There are numerous studies that say it causes harm, but you know what? Not one study says it's beneficial. Why would we want to profit off of a drug that causes brain damage, that leads to more drug use, that damages individuals, wrecks families, destroys communities? You would be putting a stamp of approval on this drug by allowing storefronts to be set up, with the city of Batavia's blessing. Kids will see this and think it is good. It is not good. I, who am always looking for ways to save taxpayers' money, you know this, do not want the influx of this money. It's not worth it. You would be benefiting off of people's harm. This is blood money.
End of the list. You want to let anybody else speak?
Is there anybody? Yes, sir. Please come and state your name. Is there somebody over here? When he's done.
Thank you for allowing me to come up. My name is Lee Lukaszewski. I am resident 911 Hanson in Batavia. I've been trying to take all this in, and I'm late to the game. I just found out today that there was this meeting, that we actually could do something about the legalizing marijuana in our own community. Mayor Shelkey, thank you for who you are. You're a man of integrity. I so appreciate you willing to be courageous, to be uncomfortable enough to speak your heart and your mind. And I'm just so thankful that I could be living here in this city, with you being mayor. Thank you. I appreciate that. I want to rebuttal a couple of things. Over here, I don't remember who it was, but you talked about personal responsibility. I'd love to talk about that. Personal responsibility is something that people have to learn. Social justice, I heard as well, too. I think you implicated something here. You both grew up in a very well-to-do white society. I grew up in the Austin district. In the Austin district, you learn survival, and you're desperate. We have a responsibility to care for people who live in areas that are different than ours. And I want to share some things that I think you all know about legalized marijuana. If you don't know, shame on you, but I'm going to bring out the statistics that haven't been shared yet. Personal responsibility is something that people learn in the right culture and the right environment. When people don't have education, when people don't have the opportunity to walk to school safe and be safe, it changes everything. It forces people to be more desperate, to do things like marijuana, because it dulls the senses. It helps you leave reality. Here's a confession. I grew up in the 70s. I smoked marijuana. I was in college, did some really stupid stuff. We'd get high, five guys would get in a Volkswagen and drive to Missouri to have some Coors beer. And we thought it was funny, until about a year went by, and I started experiencing paranoia and psychosis. And I would sit in a room after we smoked dope, and I was certain somebody was going to come after me, and I was going to hit the first person that came close to me. Today, and I know you've probably heard about it, today, scientific evidence tells us, one in five people experience psychosis because of the level of THC in marijuana. It's a fact. My question is, are you okay with that? Take away some of the market, I heard someone say that. I encourage you to go to Colorado, talk to the state police. And what they say is, the legal sales, physical sales facilities for marijuana are billboard signs for the drug dealer, who undercuts the regular sales right down the street. Business is better than ever, but I'm sure you know that. I want to read this to you really quick, and it's a bunch of statistics, but it's scientific evidence, and I want to encourage you to consider it. Once again, I'm sure you have already. This is a letter from the Illinois Association of Chief of Police, I'm going to abbreviate it. This was submitted to our Illinois Legislature. I'm sure some of you have read it. But here's what has happened in Colorado since 2013. Traffic deaths when a driver was positive for marijuana, more than doubled, that's 66% increase. During the same period, all traffic deaths increased 16%. In the first five areas that legalize recreational marijuana, which is Colorado, Washington, Oregon, Alaska, and the District of Columbia, it is now the leading cause for drug treatment among youths. You knew that, right? Marijuana-related hospitalizations have increased 72% from the time legalization of marijuana. Property crime has increased 8%, violent crime 18%. I'd encourage you to watch a YouTube presentation from the Director of Emergency Rooms in the Denver Hospital Association, petitioning the Legislature to do something, because a wait in the emergency room due to marijuana, THC, is a seven to eight hour wait. Are we okay with that? Are we okay with that here? Seven to eight hour wait, when it used to be an hour to an hour and a half. These are all things that you can go and find is true. Scientific evidence, reality, historical experiences that have happened. The thing that's most troubling to me is this. In Colorado, 22% of suspensions now in high school are marijuana-related. It's affecting our kids. One in five experience psychosis. If your brain is not fully functioning, to you, sir, I think you mentioned, everybody has a vice, how would we feel if our kids whose brain wasn't fully functioned yet, or fully formed, I'm sorry? Scientific evidence tells us that you can have mental illness from taking marijuana, THC, for the rest of your life. I haven't heard that discussed yet, so I'm bringing this all out to the public, so that we all have this out to talk about. Are you okay with that? You know, one thing I can't stop thinking about is, when I heard on the news we were going to legalize it, what popped in my mind was what I memorized in grammar school. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense." It's the government's job, is it not? Thank you.
I didn't take notes, and that was a bad idea. So, here's me staying focused. Couple things. It's incredibly damaging to say that alcohol is dangerous, or less dangerous, first of all. I'm a substance abuse counselor. I'm trained to sit with people and decide if they have a substance abuse issue, and then I clinically assess them and decide if they need treatment, okay? So I know what I'm talking about, I just want to give that a little bit of context. Alcohol kills people. I quit Google search, 88,000 in a year, alcohol-related deaths. In Illinois, 9,000 to 10,000 accidents, and 40% involve alcohol. I also want to remind us that we are not talking about whether or not we should legalize. We are talking about where people are going to buy it. So that also needs to come around, where we need to be able to regulate and know what substances people are using, that's essential for the safety of people who are using. So I wanted to make both of those points, that, Mr. Mayor, what do you say to people who lost their kid in a DUI? Because I could walk to 12 places right now and get alcohol, and it's legal.
I mean, by legalizing in Batavia, you still can go out anyplace else and buy it. So I mean, I don't know what, by that.
But your moral stance, which drug use is also, the fact that we're still talking about it as a moral issue, is also very problematic to me, but that's a whole nother speech for another day. That you can't possibly agree to this because of people who have lost their children to an overdose, that it's apples and oranges, that doesn't make sense to me. So I really just want us to bring back the fact that we are not talking about whether or not we should legalize. It's legal, okay? We're talking about where people should get it, and whether or not we're going to make any money off of it, which is crazy to me that we're not all in favor for that. So I'm not going to go on anymore. That's all I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Can we get your name for the record?
Oh, Lindsey, Lindsey Hartman. Lindsey Hartman.
Can I ask Lindsey a question? Something I wrote down a little bit ago. I know, we've heard from people who are saying that marijuana is a gateway drug to harder, a gateway to harder drugs. Have you ever seen the opposite, where marijuana can be used as a step down away from opioid?
Yes. Marijuana is proven to help with opioid withdrawals. We know a lot of people that are using marijuana to get off of opioids. Marijuana has a lot of medical purposes. Alcohol does not, so I'm going to throw that out there with the alcohol comparison as well. It is, you can't overdose off of it. I'd be careful to even bring fentanyl into the conversation about cannabis, because it has not been proven, because you would have to burn, and fentanyl doesn't burn. You can't lace cannabis with fentanyl, but it still should be regulated, absolutely. So yeah, I do not find marijuana to be a gateway drug. I think if anything, like, and I'm not a prohibitionist, I'm not saying we should ban alcohol, but I think that that is the gateway drug. I know anecdotally, most people who are going to be a cocaine user, use, even if they're trying to quit, if they're drunk, right? Most people don't get high and say, "I've been trying to quit that cocaine, but I'm just going to use a little bit right now." I've seen this. I talk to drug users all day, every day. I work in the Kane County Jail. I talk to people who have been affected by using, or selling, or drug abuse, or whatever it might be. I know these people, and again, I don't want to make it a moral issue, because that's, it's legal, that's a waste of time. But it's a matter of, to say that this doesn't happen in our community, and that we don't want this in our community, is then also telling people who are struggling with substance abuse that we don't want them here, right? We don't want marijuana in our community, we don't want to bring them in, even though they're already here. So then what kind of message are we sending to people who might need to reach out for help if they are struggling with a substance abuse issue?
I have a, kind of a point along those lines. You came before this committee.
Don't mention it.
And discussed about things that you're seeing, and ways to save their lives.
Yeah.
2017, 67 people died in Kane County from opioid overdose. 2018, 68 people died in the county. In the last 15 to 20 years, 400,000 Americans have died from opioid use. When we built the Walgreens, which is legal, no one came and stepped up and said it was not morally irresponsible to say, "Don't do that to our community." And yet, the DEA and the government was tracking all of the narcotics. People have died as a result of legal issues that have brought no one to the discussion. We have been discussing it because we know what is going on in our community, because we are terrified about it. When you came and discussed the lives that you're trying to save, how many people came and sat in the audience to discuss it with us?
No one.
We are trying to open a conversation about the narcotic use in our community, and it's all of its various forms. We are trying to tackle a problem that is bigger than any of us, and none of us know the exact path to take because of the mistakes of others. So we are trying to correct, the best that we can, those issues that will save lives. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Excellent. One more, Marty, behind that poll.
Hello, my name is Lindsey Dixon. I'm a new resident of Batavia. I've been here for about six months. I've never been to a meeting like this. I absolutely did not plan on speaking at a meeting like this, but hearing a lot of the conversations, I felt pretty compelled to just get up here and speak a little bit about my personal experience. So I moved here from Colorado. I grew up in Illinois, lived here until 2012. I was born in Glen Allen. And then I lived in Colorado the year that marijuana became legal, and I lived in a community that did choose to have dispensaries open in the downtown areas, and in areas outside of the downtown. I lived there for about six and a half years, and I saw good and bad because of that. And so I wanted to get up here, not to change anyone's opinion, because I don't think that that is possible, from me speaking on behalf of my experience, but just to share that I can be a resource, to talk through what it is like to see firsthand experience about a town who has chosen to open dispensaries. So thank you.
Wait. No, no.
Keep going.
Keep going. No, for real, if you could start with the bad things. We, well, I think we all think we know what the good things are. What did you see that was bad?
I think it was more about presentation. So there were dispensaries, to your point, that did it really well. So it was a well-established, well, I'm going to start with the good, because I'm a social worker by trade, so I go strength base first. The dispensary in our downtown, so I lived in Fort Collins, I don't know how many of you are familiar with it. They, I would say it was a well-established and well-delivered environment, where you go in, you sit down one-on-one with someone, and you explain what you want, what you're looking for, what you don't want, and what you do not want to bring home. That, I think, went really well. That, I think, went really well for visitors and residents of the town that I lived in. On the flip side, though, we also saw some dispensaries that had, you know, the stereotypical marijuana images and it just drew a crowd that I think a lot of people here would not want in their downtown area. And so it was really just about the delivery and the experience that customers received. Any other questions or can I sit back down?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anyone on the committee have anything? Mark?
Yeah, I guess I probably didn't make my point really clear before when I was talking about all those numbers. The point was, there's a lot of things that we have that are illegal. Cigarettes, alcohol, fast food, and we're not having all this prohibition against those facilities and they cause a lot more deaths and a lot more pain to families than marijuana does. And those are the real issues that I know, bring the health department in here, they'll start talking about that, that those are issues and we've been tackling those issues. And I think this, again, it's illegal, it's legal now, it is what it is and we need to do what we need to do for our residents from a safety aspect as well. So, I don't know, I guess I just didn't think I made the point clear and I want to bring that back up because a couple of people started touching on it a little bit, but that's what my point was, is that it is legal and now we just have to deal with how we're going to handle that.
Dan?
I'm curious, based on that last testimony, I would want to know how we could leverage the conditional use as a way to attract that type of dispensary and discourage the type of dispensary that we don't like. How much authority do we have with the rules that we can make to approve or disapprove of an application?
Why are you looking at me? I think you want me to answer that question.
Because I know, we have ordinances in place, we have a variance process, we can change our minds on things if we want to grant variance on something, but we also have to be fair so we don't get ourselves sued. How much can we use our own process to attract that type of business and discourage businesses that we don't want?
That's a good question that I really don't have the answer to because that's kind of like the million dollar question sitting in Illinois right now because it talks, the legislation, the law, talks about the ability to reasonably regulate and can't have unreasonable restrictions. However, of course, those definitions are not provided in the actual statute. And a lot of what it says, well, you can restrict them, but you can't go further than the statute. And so the statute has certain restrictions, hours of operation and such, and so we're not sure from a legal aspect, do we need to just do it by what the state says or can we be a little bit more restrictive if we want to? And if we get a little more restrictive, we may be opening ourselves up to possible litigation. There are some zoning things that we can do and probably Scott can talk about a little bit more about it, but certain like facade things and parking regulations and all that vote, that would probably attract a certain level of business. But in terms of saying you need to provide this type of level of service, I don't think we can really get into that nitty-gritty because I don't think the city itself has that authority to get that, delve into that because all licensing is controlled by the state.
That's fair. I just, what she said echoed and it reminded me why I walked away from that dispensary, not feeling like I needed to take a shower. It was actually kind of a pleasant experience. I felt like the guy actually kind of cared. Even when I told him I wasn't spending any money, he still seemed to care and the experience was reasonable. I like the fact that she touched on that, that you can tell them what you don't want and they're there to help you. That's the kind of experience I would want for, if we were to have one.
Tony? Yep, thanks, Marty. I just would like to respond to one comment made about the legislation. Social justice was a huge part of the conversation on the general assembly floor. I want to make the record clear about that because the idea of clemency and expunging records, that was a major part of the discussion. The African-American or the Black Caucus was very strong on that issue for appropriate reasons.
And when you read the statute.
Absolutely.
It does describe in detail the backgrounds of persons selected to the board, making sure that they had those that were out of certain demographics, out of certain convictions. It was built into it, you're right, that whether or not you like it, it was a major component of that, of the law.
Yep.
I am the hypocrite in the room. Self-admitted hypocrite.
Oh, yeah? You too?
But not because I want to, but I'm fighting 53 years of messages that it's wrong and I can't just turn that off. The thing that, I like the direction you're going right now. I mean, we got off track on some different things. I mean, we're all in consensus, the state legalized it. But I don't think we know enough to sit here and create ordinances and I would just say, I mean, I wouldn't support this today, not because I'm being hypocritical, but because I need to learn more. I think we all do and I don't think we need to, because the deadline is January 1st, we don't have to rush to make sure we're the first ones. I mean, we can learn from some of our neighbors if they get it or not. We could see what the problems are here, not anecdotally across state lines or anything like that and we can learn. There is so much conflicting data, I mean, just tonight, between what is going to happen and what isn't going to happen. If we don't go forward, we know who we are right now. One of the things that strikes me is, I'm on the board for Main Street and we're working with ideas all the time on how to get people to Batavia. I didn't think this would be the thing to draw people to Batavia. So, I would just say that let's take our time and really get some of this data and not be afraid to be the second guy in the water.
Well, I think that goes to the whole point of, as we advance forward, there's no vote tonight, there's no vote next week. There are so many layers that need to be, we've got zoning that commissioned that it would need to go through, we have other committees that it would need to go through, we have staff recommendations to the zoning and to us as to what it would go through. So, to Nick's point, this is not happening anytime soon and there's no need to. There's nothing pressing right now. Dan?
We do have to have at some point a philosophical discussion on the central business district versus the industrial park. I've noticed that that has come up as a theme. There is, I spoke to Citizen Stark earlier, who had mentioned, Commissioner Stark, it's I'm sure Commissioner Stark, who said she was not cool with it being in our central business district, but she was like, "Oh, but you could hide it in the industrial park? Did you know that there's a dispensary in St. Charles? I had no idea it was there. Oh, they can make the money, why can't we make that money too?" But that said, while I was waiting in line at the honey pot, I literally heard people say, who are probably stoned, "Look at that cookie place over there, we need to stop there afterwards." And so the foot traffic to the nearby stores created this sort of cyclic, well, I mean, it happened, the cyclical thing where people were spending more tax dollars because they were stoned and walking around and whatever. All I'm getting at is having mixed uses next to each other, having a dessert shop next to an amazing restaurant, those things kind of, that's a symbiotic relationship and I think they were ignoring something if we completely write off the central business district.
But we could write it off initially.
You absolutely could.
We could write it off initially, say that the direction of council, that the majority direction would be not in the central business district, not in the downtown, that it would be out, that we would provide that direction for them to bring those options back to us about what we would be willing to listen to and which are immediately off the table. I know for probably a lot of us that the downtown probably is not the fit, that it doesn't go to the outright prohibition, but it goes to finding that, that where does it make sure you find the balance of a legal business, even if you don't like it, that it can operate in safe conditions for the businesses, since it is a cash operation, and for the community.
So, whenever I buy new software for my computer, I typically never, ever get it when it comes out right away because there's bugs, right? There's always, you know, let the early adopters figure it out, let them crash their systems, let them deal with it. I'm looking at the same way here. To, Nick, I appreciate that. There's no rush for us to jump into this. You know, there's going to be, I mean, you can enumerate, there are going to be so many issues to work through now. We eventually have to figure that out. Is Illinois going to cap it at 500? They're not going to cap it at 500. You kidding me? This is a money grab. So there'll be, if we decide down the road, this is something we want to do, it's going to be there. But I think we need to, we need to study this, we need to prepare ourselves for it. Again, that horse is out of the barn, it's coming and enforcement's going to be the first thing. You know, our emergency services, our first responders, that's going to be the first test. It is, flat out. So as will our neighbors, but they're going to be dealing with other things as well. So, you might, I would just say, let's pump the brakes on, you know, on being kind of first adopters and let's see how this goes, let's educate ourselves, let's see how things are going. It's, again, it'll be there, the opportunity will be there if it's successful.
Laura?
I just wanted to point out that there may be some matters that we need to address because there's new types of cannabis business entities identified in the statute that we don't address in our zoning code, like the infuser organizations and processing organizations and transporting organizations and even the craft grower.
Would that come back before us first or zoning?
I think it'd come back to you for direction to the zoning, but I'll let Scott speak to that.
Yeah, we would look for direction from you as to what do you want to do with those. I mean, we can do similar to what we did with recreational marijuana definitions.
Medical.
Create a definition, but just not allow it anywhere. That's how we did this when we did the medical, we created a recreational and thinking that it's coming and that's how prohibition ended up coming into place because of, so you can do the same thing with that. And then come back and say, you know what, okay, we want to put it in X, Y, and Z district if you decide.
What does the committee feel about that? Having them come back with definitions to us?
We need that.
I think that would be something we have to identify and then figure out how we're going to categorize this. I mean, I kind of boiled it down in the notes I've got here is two questions. Do we want it and how do we want to zone it if we want it? I mean, I think in the end, those are going to be the two that we're going to have to answer, but I think there's a lot of steps between now and then to pick out what things we want to focus on.
What other items besides the definitions of the ones that you just went through, Laura, that we would need to act on?
I think, no, I think it's just the infuser, craft grower, transporting and processing that are not currently addressed in our zoning code.
Right. We also may want to clarify, I'm sorry, we may want to clarify the grower definition because it's a little bit different than what we had put in place. It's similar, it's just to make sure it mirrors the statute.
Yeah, because this is not like the medical license. If you have medical, you can actually grow it at your house. Where that is not any part of the recreational rulings or recreational law, it cannot be grown at your house.
Roman, question.
Correct.
On regarding the medical dispensaries and the cultivation centers that we have already authorized, if someone came in and applied for one of those and then converted to the state, is that something we would have to address or does that fall under the purview of the state having already, you've already allowed it, the state, you can't ban it now because it's a state licensing issue, it's not really a zoning issue. How does that work?
Let me clarify, make sure I understand your question. You're asking whether or not somebody would apply tomorrow for a medical dispensary which is allowed.
Correct.
But then wants to convert that into a recreational dispensary prior to the council act.
Which they could do.
Yes, and that's something that they, in theory, could be allowed to do. One thing I know other municipalities have done, if you guys want time where we're to study it, is you can actually pass like a temporary moratorium, as you have done in other instances, saying, "We're not going to allow any of these type of business for a period of three months, six months, a year, until we have a chance to actually study these issues." That would kind of prohibit what you're discussing right now.
Yes.
In terms of a business kind of sliding in under the law before the city actually has a chance to specifically prohibit something like that.
Right, and that's where I'm trying to make sure that now that this has happened, we've already taken action on, that's a law, that has already been signed. It's a backdoor, if somebody wanted to rush it in.
We should probably close that.
We should close it until we are done.
My understanding, a medical dispensary does, cannot by right open recreational if a local municipality has zoned against allowing recreational. They would just, they would only have a medical dispensary.
And that's why I was asking, for clarity, does that?
So they can't.
They can if it's, if we allow it.
Right.
But since we have the provision in place, they couldn't convert their medical to a recreational.
Right, so two things to come into play with that. First of all, we do allow for medical dispensaries, but they are all conditional uses. They would still have to go through the plant commission and get approved by the city council. Similar to what St. Charles is dealing with, they have the medical dispensary, they were looking to seek recreational. St. Charles is making a decision on whether or not to grant that to them or not. And they basically said, "If you don't grant that to us, we may move to another community." So they have the ability to regulate that, whether or not recreational is allowed for the medical dispensary.
And that's why I was just asking because it's, don't know.
Right.
Marty?
Yeah, along the lines of this discussion, I guess what I would like to request is that we ask the city attorney to research that 552-page bill that you're referring to and specify for us if that bill says anything about who's the decision-maker at the state level that's making the decision, who gets these next 47 licenses. I mean, if you get together with a bunch of mayors in the room, which I am with some frequency, that's a question that pops right up real quick about, where does all this come from? Who's making this decision? Why does X-town get it and Y-town doesn't? Who's making that decision and what basis? Is there anything in the law that outlines criteria or qualifications? Would you go?
I think you already know the answer to that. Probably two offices in the building in Springfield.
I'd like to have them draw, you know, just take a look at, see if you can find anything that tells us about who's making these decisions.
Yeah, I know I've covered that a little bit.
Considered by mayor desire, we have nothing to worry about.
I just don't have that off the top of my head, so we can provide that information to the council.
Appreciate it.
So, next steps, Laura, would be just to bring those definitions back to us?
Yes.
To then be able to provide direction to zoning.
Yeah, I think that what I've heard today is that with regard to the recreational dispensary, that not interested in quickly taking action here, we'd rather have sufficient time to study and not be the first guy out there with that. But we do need to make the decisions on those aspects of the new legislation that we don't address in our current code. So we'll come back with some recommendations on those changes and if you approve that, then we'll put it through the normal course to change our zoning code.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to move that along, we can just mirror the state statute definitions and just take that to plant commission as a text amendment if that's the desire. You know, we don't have to amend those or changes, we just take those and just put those in our zoning code somewhere, so.
Okay.
Marty, I've got two questions for Chief Uhl. In your 2018 year-end report, you've got statistics on opioid-related calls, but you've also got another chart in there where you talk about cannabis. And in 2016, the law was changed so that anything less than 10 grams became a civil law violation. And you can see a very sharp drop in the chart, but from a civil law standpoint, do you know, do you have statistics that show what that number turned into?
Are you talking about civil law citations for cannabis?
For cannabis.
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
But is that something that could be obtained?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to see that if we could because I want to, it would help me understand how wide is the drug problem in Batavia? The other thing I'd be curious about is your opinion on a retail shop in Batavia.
I'm glad somebody finally asked. I think it's been stated a number of times here this evening, the horse. I think it's been stated a number of times here this evening, the horse is out of the barn, the train's on the track. This law has been passed by the state legislature, it's coming to Illinois January 1st, 2020. Our major concern at this point, all the backend issues we're going to deal with, regardless of whether or not we have retail sales here or in some other community. So first, I guess, to clarify that, if we do not open a retail dispensary here in Illinois or Batavia, that does not mean Batavia residents will not be allowed to purchase legal marijuana. They could just go to another community to buy it. Our major concern, and it was already indicated by one of the participants here in the gallery, that this is a, there's a disparity between the federal statutes and the state statutes. This is still a Schedule I drug at the federal level. So it really walls off a lot of banking institutions, these are cash-heavy businesses, it's a major pragmatic concern for us from a law enforcement perspective. You know, there's some discussion about keeping out the central business district and moving it out to the commercial area. Honestly, from a practical perspective, that might be more problematic for us because it's, it's isolated now and it becomes a stop and rob because people know these are cash-heavy businesses and they're out in the middle of nowhere. So they can go and they can rob it and they can get out of it before law enforcement is alerted. So from a practical perspective, it might be a better thing to have it in a heavily populated area or some area that was more vibrant. So that's a major consideration for us.
Chief, well, we have you in front of the mic, I'd like to ask you a question in reference to that. Do you know or have heard from the Chiefs Association or anything, with all the medical dispensaries and located within the state that are cash-heavy, have there been an uptick in robberies at those facilities?
Not that I, not that I, you know, not from an anecdotal perspective, I don't have any.
I couldn't find anything online about it.
Now, to put that in perspective, there are about 11.5 million residents in the state of Illinois and about 60,000 medical marijuana licenses. So it's not, it's, it's apples and oranges right here. I don't think we have enough data from the medical marijuana program to be able to extrapolate that to what would happen. I mean, if we, when we go legal, the usage is going to explode, there's no doubt about it. People that don't consume marijuana now, based on the fact, the mere fact that it's illegal, are going to start consuming marijuana. So, you know, the figures of 60,000 medical marijuana licenses, I don't think translates really well to the recreational industry.
There's, Chief, there's also going to be another larger, actually scarier issue with the home grow portion of the law, is there not? That even apart from the dispensaries, the home grow could actually be more concerning and we have.
Homegrown is not part of the recreational law.
No, but the, the home grow portion of it with people being able to have, that's going to be a law enforcement.
That will be a change as of January 1st as well. So people who hold medical marijuana cards will now be allowed to grow marijuana in their homes. Now, there's a hole in the legislation, they're trying to fill that gap right now, because really, it doesn't address regulation. We don't know, they'll have to apply, I think what's, the fix is going to be, they're going to have to apply to do home grow, so we're alerted that that is going on. Otherwise, we're pretty much blind to it. You know, matter of full disclosure, I'm a member of the Illinois Chiefs Association, we were in wild opposition to the legalization effort. It passed, it's now the law of the land, so we're going to deal with it. There are a number of issues, you know, you talked about social justice, there's an expungement requirement, it's a piece of this legislation is going to require us unfunded mandate to reach back 20 years to expunge people's records. So it's going to be just a, you know, a practical administrative kind of nightmarish issue for us. You know, we have five people that work in our records office, it's just another thing they have to do. But it's part of the legislation, so we're going to have to do it.
But I bring the, the home grow portion of it up because it's out there and it's the time that we need to be talking about this, about what we can, what we can't do. For me, this, that, that's one of the scarier things because you're going to have a lot more people putting it in their houses and that could lead to burglaries, people jumping the fence, a lot more issues than.
And this was one thing we think the legislature got almost right. Initially, in earlier drafts, they were going to allow everybody to have five plants in their home and, you know, that would have been chaos, but they restricted it now to just medical marijuana license holders only, so it greatly reduces. Although we expect the medical marijuana license applications will shoot up exponentially as well as a result of that.
Drew.
Kind of reiterate my point from earlier, since the chief brought up the unfunded mandate portion of this, that we have the opportunity in front of us to offset some of those costs. And I would add to that, and I know it's been brought up that, you know, we can go slow and things like that and the licenses are always, always going to be around, but the fact is that, at least initially, there's a limited number of licenses. We have the opportunity to perhaps get in on one of those. The longer we wait and sit around and take our time making up our minds what we're going to do, the longer we have to fund the unfunded mandate without a potential revenue source to help offset that. And just to bug Nick a little, since he brought up Main Street and how they're always looking to bring, find ways to bring people to town, the very nature of the business and the fact that there's going to be a limited number of them makes it a destination business that gets people to town that may not already be in town. And to Dan's point, there is an absolute undeniable reciprocal effect to having more people in your town.
Our tax revenue on Funyuns is going to go skyrocket.
Hey.
So Laura, can, when would we be able to have that, the definitions brought before, does it even need to come to us or can that go from what I was hearing from you, that it could just go right?
Right to plant commission. Yeah, we'd have to publish for a public hearing because it's a text amendment to the zoning code, so we would have to compile them, publish a notice and take that to the plant commission after they have their hearing.
I'm in favor of that, since the definitions are already there.
Yep.
We can just kind of move that administration portion of it.
Because you can use that to prohibit or to approve.
Use the mic, please.
We, we would use that step to prohibit or approve, so we just, we need to move that forward anyways.
Right.
That makes sense.
If, if I could add one more thing, just food for thought, I see a lot of parallels between this and the video gaming issue that we dealt with several years ago. We slow walked that decision-making process to see what, how it was going to behave in other communities. I would pose to the council that maybe that be considered in this situation. And the recreational is a game changer. I think within a year or so, we'll have a decent amount of data, anecdotal evidence as to, you know, how this, you know, maybe this isn't going to be a problem at all and it's, it's all for, you know, it's worry for nothing. But maybe it is, and if we jump in with both feet at this point, it'll be very difficult to extricate ourselves from it at that point.
To be continued. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight and participating. Moving on then to item number seven, Resolution 19-98-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number 16 with Engineering Enterprises for Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis. Gary.
Thank you. I gave some background on this issue last week, it's part of my presentation. This is for an engineering study to look into the recharge basin in the Carriage Crest subdivision. That was a basin that was designed originally to collect storm water, but there's no official outfall pipe. It's meant to recharge into the ground, storm waters. And it's been a situation that has existed out there for many, many years. It is a situation that is causing inundation and flooding issues of, of homes and properties. And so council last week discussed this and authorized me or directed me to bring forward this resolution, which basically would authorize the mayor and clerk to sign Task Order Number 16 with Engineering Enterprises to do a phase one study for the Carriage Crest Recharge Basin. That will be finding the scope of the issue with all the neighbors, having some public meetings, doing initial geologic studies, developing the preliminary engineering plans, getting us up through the point where we can be ready to go out for construction, probably in 2020 hopefully, if not in 2021, so we can construct a solution to the problem that's plaguing a lot of people out there. They, they being Engineering Enterprises, did submit a proposal for an amount not to exceed $49,620, as I indicated last week to council, that there is no budget for this item in 2019. But again, council felt it was important enough to move forward this year, and of course, we will be budgeting in 2020 for any remaining funds from this study as well as any construction. So with that, I'm going to recommend approval of Resolution 19-098-R, which would authorize the mayor to sign Task Order 16 with Engineering Enterprises.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Just remark. Or Dan?
On behalf of the residents in the third ward who need this, thank you. I have already heard from some who are ecstatic, so I wasn't at the meeting to talk about this, but thank you so much for moving this forward.
Yeah, this is a longstanding problem.
It is.
Area. Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. Recommend to council approval of Resolution 19-98-R. It was made by Dan Z, second by Meitzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regular agenda, so we can talk about it or?
Please.
Think that's something we should talk about. Council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary. Next up, moving on to Resolution 19-95-R, authorizing a representative to sign loan documents.
Good evening. As part of the Area 3 and Ward 1 improvements for storm sewer and sewer separation, the Water Department has been replacing the water main in conjunction with those projects and there isn't sufficient funding in the Water Fund to pay for all of it, so we have applied for an IEPA loan. The pre-application was submitted and now we are ready to submit the application. As part of that, we need, every time we apply for funding from the IEPA, we have to pass a resolution authorizing someone here to sign all of the certificates and items that go along with it, and that's what this first item is.
Does anybody have any questions?
Drew.
Yep.
No.
No.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we recommend a council approval.
Second.
Can I get a, can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Your vote passes. Let me move on to the ordinance.
And then the next item is ordinance 1958, and this ordinance was prepared by Chapman and Cutler, our bond counsel, for the IEPA loan not to exceed $1 million.
Any questions on this?
I just had a question, the way that it was worded with the whole, now that you said it was our bond attorneys that makes sense, because I'm like, why is this so formal and legal about?
And they are very, very particular about that. And I have to send them the posted agenda so they can read it and approve it when it does go to council. They want it worded exactly how they have provided it.
That's why I figured there had to be a requirement for the way it was worded, the way it was worded.
Yes.
It's happened every time we've had an IEPA loan.
Yes, and any kind of bond document is going to have a very long title like that.
Any additional questions? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Knop, second by, by Uhl? Uhl? Perfect. Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess? Motion passes.
Thank you. And I do have one other item, either under project status or other, if I could just go ahead with that next. I was contacted by our financial advisor, Spear Financial, earlier this summer and again this week in regards to an opportunity to refund, yeah, our fire station bonds. And we are at a point where it would be, we would see a savings of a little over $100,000. So I would just like to make sure that I would have the council's approval to move forward and have them start researching and preparing the documents for us.
I was going to bring it up under other. Thank you for bringing that to us. At least two of us will say yes.
At least. Was that another benefit of home rule?
Um, yes, it is, and.
Saving more money.
And honestly, when they contacted me, I'm like, oh, the timeline goes right in conjunction with all of our budget deadlines, but, you know, it is $100,000, so we really can't say no. And I'll bring more information to you, back to you as that progresses, but the timeline will, will start right away on the preliminary official statement and the closing would be in October.
If you wait like a week, you can save more money maybe. Take your time. Let them tweet a couple more times.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. All right, we'll move then on to the rest of project status.
Sure. One project that we recently kicked off, and this is primarily Anthony right now working with Main Street, is to work on plans for strategies to mitigate the impact to the businesses on River Street when the One Washington Place project begins to be built next spring. So we want to make sure that we're working very closely with those businesses and also trying to, you know, look for things that have worked in other places where similar types of projects were taking place, because we know that it is going to be a struggle for those businesses. It's going to be a very messy project, but it's a massive project and it's also a project that, the contours of which go right to the property lines. That is also an aspect that makes it difficult because you can't really stage the construction on the site of the construction, because that's right where all of it is happening. I'm confident that people in Batavia will come through for these businesses that we have come to know and love on that street and that we'll be put together a nice strategy to make sure that happens. The Raising Cane's Restaurant is being built every day, there are more and more construction crews out there. We are constantly doing inspections of the work, so social media rumors of them not coming to Batavia, I can assure you are false. We have spoken directly with the, the woman who came to our meeting to give a presentation from Raising Cane's about how excited they were to be here, and they are still working on hiring their staff and plan to be open in December.
Abraham Lincoln posts another lie.
Right. But that was a quote by Abraham Lincoln, that everything you read on the internet is true.
Raising Cane's isn't opening?
Um, the sidewalk between Hoover Road and Smith Court has been constructed in cooperation with the school district. Site restoration is ongoing, the project should be complete around sometime this week, so we're really happy to see that project come to fruition and we thank the school district for their partnership in that. The Randall 15 Theater is now reopened and on generator power, they're waiting for the ordered parts to arrive to fix their electrical equipment. The Park District's East Side Community Center interior renovation work is continuing. The proposed Open Swine Restaurant that's located at 107 East Wilson, they've got a full permit issued and the facade installation is continuing and internal work. They're also working on a lot of their utilities. I believe on Thursday, there is going to be a lane closure on Wilson Street.
Ish.
Perhaps? Still waiting for confirmation.
Thursday ish.
But they, they continue to work on it and work toward an opening day. And anytime you want to learn more about development projects in the city, you can always go to our homepage of our website, scroll down to the bottom and click on City Maps, and one of those are development projects. The Police Department has begun conducting their annual law enforcement school safety drills with the Batavia area schools. We do these drills each year in cooperation with the school district at every school in the community. In Public Works, they sure are busy. I mean, we're talking about another project that they're going to embark upon, but still the Ward 1 landscape restoration is ongoing and the final pavement surface to follow. The Area 3 storm sewer is under construction, the contractor has a plan in place to complete the portion of the work prior to winter shutdown, and then they're going to resume work next spring to complete the entire project. The crack fill program is delayed until after Labor Day and our electric crews are continuing to work on Main Street in preparation for that road reconstruction project. And Public Works also, there's another city map for our capital projects and you can look at a map and see all of that that's going on. You can see, is my road going to be resurfaced this year? You can see, is my road going to be resurfaced this year? Are they going to come by and do crack filling? Where are new sidewalks going in, in the city? All of those are available on those city maps.
Just to go back to the Ward 1 kind of restoration.
Restoration.
You kind of said that they would be, they would, they'd finish it next year. Do you mean phase three would be next year? They're going to, they're going to complete remediation this year?
So Ward 1 will be done this year.
Right.
Area 3, which is on the west side of Route 31. Your ward, that work is continuing as much as it can get done before winter, but for sure, we're going to go into next year.
Yeah, I just want to make sure all, everything was graded and they were seeded and everything before.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions for me? I am working on diligently on that more comprehensive explanation of our plan for future economic development strategy, and I hope to have that to you at one of the next two Cow meetings.
Next up would be other. Elliot?
I have two, actually. First one, I was biting my tongue like crazy during the earlier discussion about Prairie Street because we were discussing traffic patterns and bicyclists. And as I've mentioned in prior conversations around that topic, on the northwest corner, I've certainly seen the share of those on both McKee as well as Western where we do and don't have bicycle lanes. That being said, in a couple of conversations with residents in the Brayburn neighborhood there, we have Brayburn Park. We have plenty of children that go to play at that park, plenty of baseball games that are held at those grounds. What we don't really have though, despite the curb cutouts on the intersection at Western where Thorson and Navajo hit, are stop signs and striping. So it occurred to me in these conversations that we really ought to look at that if we're serious about slowing traffic down on Western, about making it safe for pedestrians and cyclists, about connecting a neighborhood to walking to the elementary school that they fill into, and to really just make a better access for even the citizens on the east side of Western to be able to get to that playground safely. So if another alderman would join me, I would greatly appreciate it. I would love to be able to look at what it would take to get striping at least on the north, west, and south end of that intersection. I think it just makes sense. I really do. And to turn that into a true four-way stop sign intersection.
I'll join you. I would join, but I guess I would add, as we discussed during adding signalization or crosswalks or whatever on Main Street, that this will be a difficult intersection for adoption and we might need flashing beacons, stop signs. I know which, which are more expensive, but I'm concerned about someone driving through and not realizing this isn't, this is an intersection. And then also you get one for your career. This is the one you're using it on?
Fine.
Okay. I use mine, so I just want to make sure.
Fine.
And I will reiterate what Public Works ordinarily says is that we do use enhancements when we first install them, and we have been successful in that type of strategy.
We, we used that when the, the stop signs were put in alongside the high school at both Millview and at Western. And that was really good. I wish we could use that for the first month of school every year, put the flashing ones out there because I think that would help people remember not to run kids over out there.
And just to, to kind of put the end of this one on, this was, this was two parts, really. It was about one part connecting the two different sides of Western, if you will, to either go to the playground or go to the school, right? But I would certainly entertain, you know, a separate or larger discussion, taking a look at some of these intersections that for the sake of getting to the schools or public playgrounds where we don't have safe crosswalks, taking a look at that and as kind of a more holistic discussion and at least getting some priority in order where we look to make some of those improvements down the road.
To that point, Elliot, now he talked with me about this one earlier today. So we were kind of looking at the ones around the school and the two major intersections for the high school. If we were to kind of start that one, there is no striped crosswalk on one of the four sides of the north intersection at Western and Wilson. And then when you go to the south one at Main and Millview, the, the crosswalk is half there. It's like a plank. It like goes out and it just stops. So it's like the crosswalk to nowhere. If we can get some more paint and just kind of finish that job.
Those are two non-eyed.
Wouldn't want to confuse the high school. I don't know where to go.
So we can do that. We don't have to ask for approval to do that. We can decide to do that. Right, Gary? Gary's over there furiously taking notes on this tonight. Okay. Anybody else have any others?
The, the second one that I had. I was going to wait until next week to, to remind council about this, but as almost to the day, just by the way of how our sessions fall, a year ago, I spoke about suicide in our community. And I wanted to remind everyone that next month, September, is National Suicide Month. And I really, really want to encourage this council as much as, as at all possible to not be afraid to share stories about suicide in our community, about suicide that has affected us personally. It's here. It's everywhere. It's not this taboo subject that should be left in the closet. People go through it. Families go through it. There is aftermath going through it. As I said, today's the one year anniversary of me mentioning that. My son, as I shared last year, was at a memorial reunion type of event tonight, still dealing with that aftermath. So as, as much as possible, I want to encourage this council, and if that means renewing a proclamation, happy to. If that means just sharing personal stories, happy to. But I definitely want to keep that alive, that we are, are strongly supporting people talking about what has happened with suicide in their lives.
And to Laura's credit, she actually emailed me about the same thing to make sure that we, as we have passed several years on the, based on the starting of the efforts of Yorkville Alderman Joel Frieder, it was another reminder, and we do it every year, to make sure that we are constantly talking about it. So yes, you're unbeknownst to you too.
I sent Laura the updated Yorkville one today to have that put on the agenda for the next meeting. So it will be there and we can all second it.
Just to clarify though, for the cameras, you said that September is Suicide Month? It's Suicide Awareness Month, right?
Prevention and awareness.
Prevention, right.
Suicide prevention.
Well, we don't want anyone to think it's Suicide Month.
Did we want to talk about whether next Tuesday, if we want to have simply a city council meeting, or would you like to have a combo city council meeting and then followed by a committee of the whole meeting? Allow us to get more work done that night? And it's an opportunity to see what that experience might be like if we choose to go that way in the future. I think it's unusual for a council to have, where there are not separate committees, talking with other cities. It's unusual to have six meetings per month. So, but maybe there, that might be the case.
I meant to respond to the email, I forgot. When I first got here, there were like 40 meetings a month.
So we're doing good.
We whittled it down. My only fear is that by losing additional meetings, we lose more opportunities like we had tonight to have wonderful discussions. I have been, it's been a while since I've been as proud of us. We did a really good job tonight. It was a great discussion. I wouldn't want to cut another night.
I'm curious, how many Cow meetings does Naperville have? Because obviously their meetings go very long.
Was here, but.
They're long-winded.
I guess my only input on it is I understand it when we're losing a meeting during a holiday week. I can see us trying to do that. My only fear is we'll get to that point where maybe we spend time on something during our council meeting and then we cut short discussion times at a Cow meeting. So I can see as if we do that, we have to be able to remain flexible enough to say, you know what, those last three things, we're just not going to get to those tonight. We're going to have to put them off to the next meeting. And a Cow. I mean, and we've done that before. I don't have a problem doing it if it's on a week where we're losing a day because of a holiday. So we effectively have moved the council meeting to the Cow meeting. You know, to the next day. So as long as everybody's okay with that, I think that's fine to do when those situations arise. I don't think I want to cut out meetings every month.
Can I, can I jump in here for a second? Before, I think almost everybody sitting here at the table was on this council, this came up and we had a discussion about how we wanted to structure the city council meeting. And a decision was made at that point, and it's something I've followed ever since then, is that they wanted the meeting to be, the city council meeting to begin with a section, a session about what Batavia today, whatever day it was, was all about. And that's where we started inviting the chamber and Main Street. That's when we started inviting the school groups, the Bulldog Boosters, the sports teams, you know, anybody that's got, some got an award, you know, awarding a city employee who's worked for us for 29 years like we have the last couple. So we take, you know, they said, let's try to keep it in the first half hour, but we need to get that out there so that everybody sitting here fully realizes what this town is really doing, what it's all about, you know, is there going to be a festival, tell us about it a little bit so we know what's happening, whatever. I think it's worked quite well. I mean, I think it's given this council a Batavia personality and you all are aware and informed and understand what somebody's out there saying. And, you know, then we decided that with the chamber and Main Street, they would switch off. One would have one meeting, so they both wouldn't be there and, but I think this has been a really good start to our meetings is that we start these meetings off. And generally, this is pretty good news. We're talking about things that are happening in town that are positive, that people, new ideas, whatever. And I think it's just good. So I, you know, I understand that the desire to kind of bring down the time limits of the city council meeting, but I think if anything's going to get lost, it may be that if we were to cut all that stuff out.
Right. And that's the thing, I don't want to take away from the things that we need to do or we want to do at meetings, but I can see the need at some point to combine the, or combine them in one night to be able to take care of a couple of things that maybe need to go on that agenda and, and be talked about. So we don't lose that committee meeting.
Well, do you, do you truncate it then to just to make it mission critical things for, for something like that?
Just don't let the mayor speak at the end. Cut the mayor.
I also.
We'll give him three minutes. We'll give him three minutes.
It's four.
It's four.
Laura, I also, I also thought when you put it, my first reaction was, oh, that's going to shorten some time between, you know, getting stuff approved. But then you think about it and it's like, no, actually, it still is the same amount of time. The same cycle time. So there, there's actually no efficiency gained and we might start rushing through the good narrative stories to get to other things.
Okay, I have one more other that I almost forgot about. I was approached by a citizen that was recently annexed and they got a letter from the, from Scott Haynes about changing their garbage service, all the other pickups and everything. Do we force residents to change garbage service?
Yes, that, that is required because we have a contract with Waste Management. So we, they do have to change in most cases, I'm sorry, advanced disposal. In most cases, they actually do save money because we have.
What if they weren't using Waste Management before and they feel that their deal is better with who they have? They can't stay with them?
They cannot stay with them. We have a contract.
They cannot stay with them. And that was, because I didn't see it anywhere in the annexation that they had to change.
Right. They do have to change to our current collar. And again, in most cases, when we've compared it, when we've, when they've asked questions, they can save money with our collar because we're doing it more on a large basis.
But was it listed in the annexation?
It was not listed in the letter, I don't believe, no.
Okay. Because that's something then I would like to see that changed and put in there because I don't think that's fair for people to not see that when they either petition to be annexed or forcibly annexed, if that's not in there.
Right, sure.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
We're more efficient than Naperville.
Yeah. Yeah.